Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, November 5th Sioux Falls City Council meeting. Glad we have such a full house tonight. Look forward to a great meeting tonight. Clerk, let's read the roll and get started.
Council members Breckie Erickson, Kylie, Nightzert, Selberg, Sale, Starr, Staley.
We're proud to have Tom Rooney with us tonight to lead us in our invocation. Tom is with the Direct Line Prayer Center, which if you don't know where that is, it's right across from City Hall, next to Shipley's, and they just celebrated their 10-year anniversary in Sioux Falls this week. So if you all rise, Tom will lead us in the invocation and then remain standing for our Pledge of Allegiance. Let us pray. Father, we thank you and praise you for your goodness and your mercy, and we come to you tonight, Lord, asking you for that in our lives, Lord. We pray, God, that you would have your hand upon the people that are here, that you would bless them. And, God, we also pray for your blessing, your strength, your wisdom, knowledge, and understanding for the council members, Lord, as they decide the city's affairs. We thank you, Lord, for the guiding of the affairs of man, and we put our hope and our trust in you. We just ask you, God, for your blessing on the city of Sioux Falls, that you would have your hand upon us, Lord, that we would remain to be a city shining on a hill. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening, everybody. On the first meeting every month, we take this opportunity to recognize our Citizen Recognition Award recipients. And while I have the opportunity just to remind you folks, it's very easy to nominate folks for this award. You go to sioufals.org, and there's a little tab for superhero on there, and we'd love to see more of your friends and family and whoever else you know in town that's going above and beyond, be up here. We'd love to recognize these folks. So tonight, we have two recipients, and our first one is Marcy Walt. Marcy, if you want to come up? Will you come up between us here? Thank you. Marcy has been a dedicated volunteer for Health Connect of South Dakota since 2009. She faithfully assists weekly with projects needing assistance by Health Connect. Some of these projects include office work, such as adding marketing branding to materials borrowed from Health Connect, making toothbrush kits for youth and adults that Health Connect distributes with their visit to the banquet and savers who are placed in quilt kits, repairing materials that are used by the University of Sioux Falls, Augustana, University of South Dakota Nursing Programs in their community outreach education projects, and involved with public events such as assisting the executive director with blood pressure screenings and information sharing at Savers in Sioux Falls, registering youth and adults for participating in the 2018 Health Connection Fair, previously called the Family Health and Safety Festival. Besides donating her time and energy to the busy office at Health Connect, Marcy has become famous for making amazing homemade treats that she shares with all, and she's good at remembering everybody's birthdays, along with all those in their family. She even goes back to her former employers and her workplaces and brings them treats to celebrate their birthdays. Now, we've been told to ask about her Better Than Sex cake, saying she will probably make you one for your birthday. So what about this cake? When's my birthday? Yeah, we'll talk after this. Her volunteerism is a role model for anyone in the community. The Health Connect of South Dakota Board of Directors are proud to have Marcy chosen as a superhero. Congratulations.
I'm very humbled.
Yes, thank you. Next, we have Jack Divig. You don't have any recipes, do you? Okay. Jack Divig has been going above and beyond for the city of Sioux Falls for years and years. He's been a member of the Sioux Falls Morning Optimist Club since 1979, where he's recruited more than 120 new members. Through his Optimist Club Association, he led the committee to establish Camp Bring It On for children battling cancer. Jack has served on the Chamber Diplomat Committee for the past 12 years and served as its chair in 2010. He was also recently awarded Emeritus Status Honor for his diplomat service. Jack has also served as a Chamber Associate Ambassador for many years, signing up countless members. In addition, Jack has served on the Board of Directors for Our Savior's Lutheran Church and been a volunteer usher for longer than I can remember. The man really is everywhere. Jack doesn't just volunteer for organizations, he gives them his all and makes a point to go above and beyond at everything he's involved with. They say the key to success is to treat other people the way you wish to be treated. There should be a picture of Mr. Divig accompanying wherever that motto is posted. He's a kind and caring man who always puts the well-being of others ahead of his own personal interests. Jack has had his share of setbacks, including the recent loss of his wife Cheryl last year, followed soon after by the surgery that limited his mobility for a period of time. Even in the face of the harshest adversity, he continued to get up, suit up, and show up for everything asked of him, and of course, to a number of things above and beyond what was asked of him, all with the same smile, optimism, and work ethic that is his trademark. Remarkable. Our city owes this man a debt of gratitude for all he has done and all that he is. Oh, what could be done around the community with 100 more Jack Divigs, a true superhero. Let's get this dude a cape. Congratulations.
is a program that we do within the city of Sioux Falls, and I was proud to hear that we didn't, no one failed the academy this year. We had all passes, so we'll let you guys take that away.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Councilors, Sioux Falls audience and viewers. My name is Russ Sorenson, urban planner with the Planning and Development Services Department. With me this evening are my colleagues and friends, Jason Bieber, urban planner, and Sam Bilcock, transportation planner. Tonight, we gladly want to recognize the second annual Citizens Planning Academy class of 2018. The academy class description is such that it's a free educational and interactive program for any resident who's interested in learning more about the role of planning plays in building our community. The goal is to empower residents to achieve a better understanding of what community planning is, its language, its processes, and also to effectively engage in planning efforts in, both in their neighborhoods and in our city. The Citizen Planning Academy also provided an opportunity for our department to showcase our efforts to implement our vision and the mission statements. It encourages citizen participation and empowerment. It also offers our citizens an educational forum in a new city building. It also increases public awareness that October, the month, is National Planning Awareness Month. For the Citizens Planning Academy, this year we had two sessions, one at the beginning of October and at the end of October, and the sessions were held at our city's center, the Falls Conference Room. We utilized news releases, emails, and social media communications. We reached out to neighborhood associations, neighborhood watch groups and organizations, neighborhood leaders, civic leaders as well, and we had online registration that was available. I'm pleased to report that we had 36 persons who applied and participated and received their certificates in the Citizens Academy. We embraced several topics and questions. We introduced and addressed what is city planning, the history at national and local levels, the difference between land use and zoning, and the components that are necessary for a well-planned city and to afford concise growth management. The difference between a comprehensive plan and a zoning ordinance was also described. We get topics as transit and transportation. We also explored the planning applications and also the public hearing process, and we also took that home to them, where they could use their cell phones or go online, and we became, we got them familiar with www.siufalls.org and where they can interact and observe, as well as they can really dig down or drill down into the issues that are of interest to them. We also conducted a survey. It's still ongoing, but as of noon today, we had 13 persons complete the survey. Planning met their expectations for the academy. Seventy-seven percent agreed. We had, did we dedicate enough time for the topics as well? We had almost 90% that said yes, we did. We also asked if we answered those questions that they had, and 85% indicated that they did. And also, two important questions. Would they recommend Citizen Planning Academy to other citizens? We had 100% so far that have said yes. Also, would you be interested in participating in a future advanced level of Planning Academy? And they all said yes, 100% so far. We can provide you with additional comments, but it's, they said it was a great opportunity to learn about planning. They thanked us as a staff, and also, they were glad to see that there was a wide range of citizenry, both young and old, those that were tech savvy and those that weren't, also those that, from different social incomes and so forth. We realized that we all have the same concerns, the same ambitions, and the same dreams and hopes to make Sioux Falls our home place better. We also had some classroom exercises. We had breakout sessions. We also had homework. They had to go home with homework and then report the second session. And also, we have a class photo for the graduates of 2018 with their certificates. Tonight, I think we have three to five citizens that are here. We did put out a call for them, but perhaps the weather kept them away, and perhaps they're busy hanging their certificates on their walls at home. But would those citizens from the academy who are graduates please stand and be recognized? Mayor and council and audience, would you please join me in recognizing them as the 2018 class? That concludes our report.
Thank you, Russ. Great program. Really would encourage anyone to take advantage of that. It's a great job by City Planning as well. Appreciate you guys doing that. All right, let's move on to the approval of our consent agenda. I'd look for a motion on this.
Move to approve. Second, Selberg.
Move to approve by Kylie and seconded by Selberg. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Starr.
I'd move to remove items 37 through 42.
Okay, there's a motion by Counselor Starr. Is it 38 through 42 or 37 through 42 that you'd like to remove?
Um, 37.
37 through 42. Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. It's 38, 38 through 42.
Motion to withdraw sub-items 38 to 42 by Counselor Starr. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Second by Counselor Erickson. Any discussion there? Can I get a vote on that, please?
Council members Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
All right, that's passed eight to zero. Now on to our regular agenda. I'd look for a motion on that.
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second.
Move to approve, Erickson, seconded by Kylie. Any discussion, council? Okay, I'd look for a vote on that, please.
Council members Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
All right, that's passed eight to zero. We're now at the public input portion of tonight's agenda. As a reminder, input during this portion will last no more than 30 minutes because public input for all regular agenda items will be taken. You're asked to limit your general public input at this time to topics not appearing later on in the agenda. For this portion and regular agenda items, speakers are limited no more than three minutes unless additional time is granted by this council. At this time, I'd like to invite anyone forward who has public input for tonight's meeting. Please note, clerk, the time is 7:16. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Tenhaken and council members. My name is John Nordley. I'm president of the Oakview Neighborhood Association and live at 404 North Locust Avenue. It has come to my attention that our Oakview Neighborhood Association is coming under fire for supposedly lengthening the process of zoning, sale, and development of the Lacy Homestead property at Sixth and Bonson. This at great expense to the developer and inconvenience to property owners. The same people that make that accusation would like to see zoning and approval of development left solely to the developers and City Hall without input from neighboring landowners and residents. My first point is that Oakview Neighborhood Association came after and as a positive result from a group called Shape Oakview. The Oakview Neighborhood Association celebrates the diversity of our neighborhood and welcomes all neighbors to join and take part in the organization for the betterment of our community. Shape Oakview was a loosely organized group of which I was a part, seeking to educate the council and community of our concerns for the development of the Lacy Homestead. Never was an attorney or consultant hired, but the neighbors worked as a team using public input and written communication to make our concerns known. We did not oppose development, but asked for compromise and actively sought and proposed other uses for the property that we felt might better serve the community. There are those that say we accomplished nothing, considering development of an apartment complex on the site is ongoing, but I say that compromise was achieved and that the majority of the neighbors are satisfied with the outcome. From the beginning, our main concerns were density, water, drainage, and pedestrian and traffic safety. First on density. According to the latest plans I have seen, the number of units go from an original proposal of 143 to 83 units on the five acres of land. This is approaching a 50% reduction, much more agreeable to the elementary school, city park, and residential dwellings that surround it. Second, on water drainage, the green space and landscape has been enhanced, along with retention ponds that were all but missing on the original proposal. On the most recent plans that I have seen, parking lot drainage and connectivity to the existing storm sewers has been addressed, and an awareness of surface water drainage problems in the area has been reinforced within the city. Third, on pedestrian and traffic safety, the problem intersection at Sixth and Bonson is being rebuilt, with the developer selling land to the city for proper alignment of the streets and improved signals. In short, the system worked. Stipulations to the zoning and compromises were made. I would hope that you continue to listen to surrounding property owners and neighborhood concerns throughout Sioux Falls, especially where zoning and development requests are made in infill situations, facilitating compromise and requiring zoning stipulations when appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, John. You nailed it. Thank you, John. Great comments. Good evening.
Mayor and members of the city council, I'm John Cunningham, 4904 South Oxbow, Sioux Falls. We, the citizens of Sioux Falls, give you power and authority and tax dollars and expect you to use them to make Sioux Falls a better place to live, work, and do business. And for the most part, you do that, and fairly well. There's been one glaring exception. In August this year, there was a political fundraising camp, campaign fundraiser that was, to which the President of the United States was invited, and it raised a lot of money. It also had a fair number of expenses, rent, staff, food, supplies, and security, and the campaign paid for all those expenses except security. For security, the city of Sioux Falls donated $29,000 of police time as an in-kind donation contribution to that campaign. As a result, the event raised $29,000 more than it should have, and I believe that that should be illegal. If not illegal, it's at least improper. This expenditure did nothing to make Sioux Falls a better place to live, work, and do business. But it's the use of that tax, those tax dollars that disturbs me and drove me to make this statement. Those tax dollars were used as part of the funding for a vicious advertising campaign of disinformation, deceit, and lies. And that advertising candidate, in that campaign, the candidate falsely accused her opponent of promoting income tax in South Dakota. That was a lie, and our tax dollars perpetuated that lie. She also accused her opponent of being anti-gun, which was another lie, and our tax dollars were used to perpetrate that lie. Now, she's from Washington, where lies and deception and disinformation are currently the style, and has absorbed this new style and brought it, trying to bring it to South Dakota. And I do not believe that our tax dollars should be used to bring that style of campaigning to South Dakota, even though it might be successful. While this may or may not be totally illegal, as I believe it should be, as a minimum, it can be construed as waste of taxpayer money and an issue you might wish not want raised in the next election. All that could be avoided by submitting a bill to the campaign. I'm amazed that this didn't get more scrutiny from the council, and in fact, I wonder if the campaign actually even reported that contribution in its campaign finance. My time is nearly up. The mayor has provided an excuse for this action, and I will rebut that response. I can do that tonight or at another time. That's your prerogative. In summary, this is an out-and-out contribution, a subsidy by our tax, taxpayers in Sioux Falls, of a terrible advertising campaign that does nothing
Thank you, John.
...to make Sioux Falls a better place to live, work, and do business, and you should not have allowed this waste of taxpayer dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Tenhaken. My name is Christopher Bruce. I'm a new resident in Sioux Falls. I come before you tonight with concerns about the 5G network, which is the new cellphone network that is being installed in the city at this point. This new technology is being backed by Senator Hune, Soon, and also by Mayor Tenhaken. The mayor and I had a meeting three days ago, and we discussed this somewhat for 15 minutes. During that period of time, the mayor said to me concerning an article that I handed him, that he was waiting for more reliable information as to the dangers of 5G. And to anyone in this room, I invite you to only put 5G dangers in a Google search box, and you will come up with so much more than you ever wanted to know about this new network. The mayor then stated that he was going to wait for some more reliable information to come to bear, say, from the American Cancer Society. In this article that I handed the mayor, it states, "The researchers noted that the increased risk of the rats was relatively small, but if these findings translate to humans and widespread increase in cellphone use could have a significant impact on populations." Thus, the NTP, and that would be the National Toxicology Program, the U.S. National Toxicology Program, studies served to renew the debate about the potential harmful effects of cellphones on human health. Not only that, it caused a significant shift in the American Cancer Society's understanding of radiation and cancer, and sparked them to state that our ignorance of RFR's impact on human health could be compared to our previous obliviousness to the connection between smoking and lung cancer. Folks, 5G is the single most dangerous thing this country has ever installed, not only in this country, but plans to install it worldwide. They're going to be putting towers every two to 12 houses when this goes live, folks. You might as well put the stupid thing in your bedroom at this point, or stick your head in the microwave and press the on button. That's all I got to say about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Scott Ersmann, Sioux Falls. I didn't know John was going to come up and speak about the $29,000 expenditure, but I agree with him. I was very upset about that. I actually wanted to see the president. I didn't vote for him, but when a president comes to town, you would expect them to have a public event, and that would mean that the police would have to protect them, and we would, as taxpayers, would have to pay for it. No, it was a private event, and the taxpayers got to pay $29,000 for him to show up, and we never got reimbursed for that. And I agree with him. No one should be sent a bill, and she should have to pay it. But that's not why I'm up here to talk. The informational meeting earlier, there was an update on the Levitt. Now, what I've heard, and I'd have to do more research on this, what I've heard throughout the country, where there's Levitt pavilions, people are allowed to bring coolers, and that means they are allowed to bring their own food, their own beverages, which include beer. They shouldn't be, it's a free concert. That's the whole point of the Levitt. They shouldn't be forced to have to buy a beer at there for a free concert. I think that this should be changed. I think they should be allowed to bring their own beer. I think it's okay to have someone ID people. So if you want to bring your own beer, fine, but you should have to have a risk ban to prove you're 21, so the police don't have to do extra work. But I think the other Levitts allow it, and I think we should allow it. I have no interest in making a beer distributor more rich. This is a, this is a, the taxpayers of Sioux Falls have put in over $2 million to build this. We're going to put in $75,000 a year in maintenance, and who knows what other costs we have involved. If I want to bring my own beer and sit in the grass and drink it, I should be allowed to. It's my park. It's not the Levitts. And what upsets me even more about this, besides the fact that, you know, you can bring your own food, you can bring your own pot, but you can't bring your own beer, doesn't make any sense to me, is that somehow this decision was made between some bureaucrats in the Parks Department and the bureaucrats with the Levitt, and the public was left completely out of this decision. And I've been asking people about this for a year, and I never get an answer. So today, I finally got the answer. It's because they've been doing this behind the scenes, because they want to put a RFP out and have some beer distributor make some money from selling beer there. Now, I don't have a problem with them selling beer there. I think that's a good idea. But I also believe, since as a taxpayer, I'm funding that facility through my taxes, if I want to bring my own cooler with my own beer that I can buy for $5 a six-pack instead of $5 beer, I should be able to do that. And I'm disappointed that this decision was made without any public involvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. My name is Randa Heller, and I would like to speak for my three minutes about zoning and water and drainage. As you go forward and as Sioux Falls goes further and further out into the areas that are not as high, I would like to give you an experience that we had. I have a daughter who is a single parent. We bought a duplex down in the Platinum Valley area. When we bought this duplex, we had it inspected. Everything looked really good. The inspector said, "You might want to talk to the city about what's going to happen behind you because you're a little low." We have taken water in that duplex three times in the lower area. Not only us, but four of the 10 have taken water because of these big rains. Lance Weatherly has come out on a Saturday, and I have been to the very expensive office of the very expensive grading plan that was okayed by the city, and I have discovered, going through the process and trying to read all those, which is a real trick, I can tell you, and that what happens is none of those grading plans are inspected. We inspect plumbing, we inspect electric, but we don't inspect the grading. And it goes something like, well, if it's over a year are inspected. We inspect plumbing, we inspect electric, but we don't inspect the grading. And it goes something like, well, if it's over a year since the disclosure, you can't go back to the builder, who, the builder and the developer were a partnership on these 10 duplexes, and it was 13 months when we took water. So you can't go back on that. And you can't go back on the city, because the city okayed the drainage plan, so you have to go back on the builder. But the builder doesn't care. The builder doesn't care, because he's not going to work with us again as a developer. They go back and redevelop. So if this had been done right in the first place, and Lance Weatherly pretty much said, yeah, it didn't happen, because there's supposed to be drainage to the streets between each of these duplexes, there is no drainage valleys. I have gotten together with the neighbors, and together, we have spent about $15,000 of our own money, putting in basically valleys between five of these lowest duplexes, and we pray that's going to be enough. Not to mention, the money we have put over to our insurances. I have paid out of pocket to have new carpet brought up, and we've got sump pumps, folks. We've got them. What I'm saying is, as you go forward and as you consider drainage issues that people are bringing to you, please, 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 have those water studies done, be able to understand them, question those numbers, and see who is taking care of that. Because now, as we go, we're going through utilities, water sprinkler systems, and lawn, beautiful lawn, and it's been a real hardship for my single daughter.
Thank you, Randa.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right, Clerk, next item, please.
Item 20 is a new 2019 retail wine license for Tang Ramen Incorporated Ramen Fuji 2300 South Minnesota Avenue, Suite C, with conditional use permit 9222218 being approved on October 3rd, 2018, pending final inspections per health. Item 21 is a new 2018/19 retail malt beverage license for Tang Ramen Incorporated Ramen Fuji 2300 South Minnesota Avenue, Suite C, with conditional use permit 9222218 being approved on October 3rd, 2018, pending final inspections per health. Item 22 is a new 2018/19 retail malt beverage license requesting off-sale use only for I-90 Fuel Services Incorporated, gas stop 5210 West 12th Street, CUP not required, pending final inspections per health. Item 23 is a special one-day liquor license for T-Slat JJ's Fine Wine Spirits and Cigars to be operated at Sanford Maginetics 1321 West 22nd Street for a physician mixer on November 8th, 2018. Item 24 is a special one-day malt beverage and special one-day wine licenses for Catering America Chef Dominique's Catering to be operated at Orthopedic Institute 810 East 23rd Street for a holiday party on November 29th, 2018.
Good evening, Jamie.
Good evening, Jamie Palmer with Licensing. I don't have any additional information for you on these items, other than a couple of the applicants are here, if you have questions for them, or I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Okay, thanks, Jamie. Anyone from the public here to speak on any of these items? Counselors, questions for Jamie on any of these? Entertained a motion? Move to approve? Kylie?
Second, Selberg.
Move to approve by Counselor Kylie and second by Selberg. Any discussion, counsel? If not, a vote on this, please.
Councilmembers Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Berg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
R?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
That has passed eight to zero. Next item.
Item 25 is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 6300 West 41st Street from the S1 General Institutional District to the RA2 Apartment Residential Moderate Density District, petition number 8738218, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval seven to one with conditions.
Jason Bieber, representing Planning and Development Services. This is an application by Gales Venas, the owner's first assembly of God Church. It is located north of West 41st Street and east of South Keene Park Road, just to the east of Roosevelt High School. It's roughly 5.32 acres. The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking at constructing a senior apartment complex. This was the original plan that they had submitted back when you guys saw this the first time, I think back in September, and just wanted to run through real quick. This is the updated revised plan as submitted for tonight. Just some changes from the previous to this plan is, they had gone down from two buildings and 96 units down to one building and 48 units. They were also rezoning the 2.03 acres on the east to Conservation, which will be used solely for detention purposes, water storage purposes. They will also, the building will also have a 60-foot setback to the neighbors to the north. The previous concept plan on that northeast corner of the second building, excuse me, it was a 38-foot setback, and they also are looking to put a two-foot berm and six-foot fence within that required buffer yard along the north property line. They are looking at moving the existing church access to the north and using a combined access for this project as well as the church. This will then allow, this allows the building to be pushed farther to the south than you had seen previously, which gave it that 60-foot setback. The church is actually going to take all of that private street onto their existing property. I could be happy to, or I'm happy to answer any questions. We also have Lance Weatherly from Engineering that's here to answer any drainage questions you may have.
Thanks, Jason. Is there anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Come forward, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening. Judy Donovan, I live at 6105 West Oscar House Circle. One of our major concerns is water drainage. As you all know, there's been many videos, pictures, and things taken, and there was a water study done, which, I'm not sure I understand it, since I'm not an engineer, but one of the big questions I have on the water studies is, they point out that they didn't do, a detailed ground survey was not completed in between the homes and the pipe inlet to establish an elevation of overtopping or point in which flows. This is a major concern of ours, and it's hard to understand that the drainage is going to be fixed by this, when the whole area wasn't part of the water study, as I understand this. There is a major problem right now with the drainage coming down all the way from Keene Park Road, all the way down our backyards, and it's, and this whole area they showed in the topo map is not, I don't know how old and where this came from, but all of this doesn't go to the water inlet. A lot of this water comes, like I said, down our yards and bypasses the water inlet. It comes down our yards through the yards out to Valley View. So I would just ask for some understanding and explanation on what the water study's going to be, and how that's going to be rectified, when they didn't do the whole area for the study. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and Counselors, Mark Mickelson, 2901 South Fifth Avenue, Sioux Falls. I'm here with Aaron Norman with DGR Engineering. We are, and then my partner, Gales Venas, is here. I don't think Dan from the church could make it, but you've heard this issue, I think, three times now. You heard us the first time, and then sent us back to the Planning Building Commission to see if we couldn't make some agreements with the neighbors. And since that time, what that shows you there is that we originally had proposed two 48-unit buildings, and we determined that the site constraints and the significance of the drainage issue, we approached the church, and we're able to make an agreement to just do one building for 48 units, so we cut the size of the building in half, and then really wanted to make sure that we had room for an adequately sized detention pond, and that site does flow to the corner where the pond is, and then it drains out. So we've certainly lessened the impact on the neighbors by cutting the size of the development. We think we've addressed or taken at least a good first step on addressing the drainage concerns that I think are pretty legitimate. It's a very wet year. I would remind the council that this is actually a down zone. It's currently zoned institutional, and we could build a similarly sized, or someone else could build a similarly sized structure. I think one of the major points of concern for at least some of the neighbors has been rearranging the building and facing it north. And since we had originally floated that concept, I think back in May or June at a meeting, and at that point in time, we weren't sure how far we could make the setback of the building. I think we'd originally talked about a 30-foot setback. The road that you're seeing there is now actually located on the church's property, and that freed up 30 feet, so we were able to offer the neighbors a 60-foot setback, which I think would lessen the impact on most of the neighbors. And frankly, by cutting the project scope size in half, we're mitigating that as well. I think that probably concludes most of my remarks. Aaron is here. We have had a very good working relationship with planning staff and drainage folks. We've had one joint meeting with the neighbors and planning staff and their council, Arlie Brandy. I suppose the one thing I should mention again is, there were some concerns about the shadow impact.
Mark, if you'd like, that's three minutes. I can turn it over to your colleague here, and he can talk about that if you'd like.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Good evening, counsel. I guess where Mark was turning to the shadow study, which we presented last time, we took some design software and modeled the building as 60-foot setback and took worst-case scenario during the winter solstice and see how that shadow cast. Obviously, this is just a snapshot in time. The shadow is going to be moving throughout the day. You know, next day will be a little less. You know, it's probably the worst day in the whole year for a shadow. So as far as the drainage, we've reviewed the report as well. Some of the methodology and means of how they approached the report is, I would say, common to the engineering world. As far as some of the conclusions that came out of the report, they've noticed too that the pipe between the two residences is undersized, and there's options of how to either increase the capacity of that pipe, new pipe, or if we have to build a bigger detention pond, reduce the amount of flow that we release from our site. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We'll finish with public input first and take any other public input that anyone may have on this topic. Good evening.
Good evening. Mark Gunderson, 6205 West Oscar House Circle. Thank you, guys, for all your time. Just a couple rebuttals from last time. Lance made a note about the water study and saying that it would be, the area up here basically was done on the red line west, and then to the east of that line. A lot of the neighbors can attest to, and I think the study alluded to it a little bit, but a lot of the water from the ball fields is actually going down the sidewalk that's between the two houses at the very top, and then a lot of the water that's from half the ball fields is actually going into the area over the curb. And so we have a little bit more of a larger area than I think even the study concluded, and so I just wanted to point that out. And then rebuttal from last time too, in regards to the Housing Department person that was up here at the last meeting. There was a July 2nd, 2018 Argus Leader article by Patrick Anderson, that there were currently over 4,000 apartments that were vacant in Sioux Falls, so the need for 55-year-old apartments is pretty low. So that point, I think, is negated. And then, moving on, my wife and I prefer a two-story building, as we feel it'll be more appropriate to fit for the neighborhood and for the area. If not, we vote the building be moved as far away as possible to not cast a shadow onto the properties of existing houses and lawn. If this is 75 feet, if it's 85 feet, so be it. The rendering that they just showed up there is 12 o'clock noon, and we all know that at 1 o'clock, that shadow is on the building, 2 o'clock, that shadow is on the building, 3 o'clock till sundown, that shadow is on the building. They showed it at the highest point, and I understand that's a snapshot in time, but that's the other half of the story that they're not telling. We ask that the lighting on the building be no higher than appropriate set by you guys. Typically residential housing lighting is obviously just six to seven feet off the ground level. Parking lot lights, again, should be mitigated and be at a minimum. We ask that all lights not show light and/or throw light onto the neighborhood, so just down or at the building that is being built. We do have a little bit of a fence concern about the six to eight feet, if they're going to build that, that it would become an alleyway for bad things to happen between the fences that are already existing and the fence that they put up. Lastly, I ask that we have a little bit more counsel, asking the neighbors more questions. It's always back to the builders, and it's always back to DGR, Lance, Jason, but we have no say in what's said after they say something, and it's with us in our backyard forever. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Is anyone else here to speak on that item? I see you hold any applause, please, on these items. Thank you. Good evening.
Huber, 6109 West Oscar House Circle. I'm here for three minutes, trying to prevent the destruction of our neighborhood, 30 years of history of this neighborhood, and we get three minutes. And the proposal developer gets as much time as they want, because when Jason gets up here, they want this passed. The city wants this passed. The city Planning Department pushed this through, and we get three minutes. Specifically, we need as much maximum protection, not minimum, maximum protection from this development if it passes. That's the big thing, if. We're in a catch-22. The city caused the water problems from the previous rezonings, allowing the church with their parking lots, and Miller Funeral Home with their parking lots. The city caused this problem, but the city will not rectify this problem unless we accept this zoning. Then they'll put in the detention pond as necessary. 20 years, they've complained to, we, the neighbors, have complained to the city, and nothing's been done. 10 years to complain to the church, nothing has been done, except for the very small berm that's inadequate. Specifically, we need the berm and the fence along the north and east side of the Conservation District. That would match the other district. That would help protect our properties from the water and for adding privacy and protection from people from that building. Again, we have to live there 365 days a year. People have their children, have been raised there, grandchildren raised there. This will absolutely destroy this neighborhood. Just because it's big enough to hold an apartment building doesn't mean it needs to be. We're not, I don't know if you're trying to make us into Little Chicago or something, and so we have no green space in this city anymore, or what? I mean, and the problem is, as we already know, and I think the lady talked during public input, original public input, once it's done, we're screwed. If there's a problem, we go to the city and say, "Not our problem. We did the permit." Go to the developer and say, "Hey, we got the permits. Not our problem." Well, it's our problem. We'll have to spend the $10,000, $15,000, $20,000 we don't have to enforce water that we didn't create, that you guys created, and you guys don't do anything about, because we have uncaring bureaucrats, that this plan is just another notch in their belt, just another medal on their wall, that they got something passed for a developer, and they don't care about us. I mean, through this five-and-a-half-months process, we get misinformation, have answers from city planning staff. We get deceived by developers, misinformation from developers, and we get three minutes to defend ourselves. So that's just, like I said, totally unfair and totally un-American. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi. Kelly Middlebrooks, 6305 West Oscar House Circle. As you can tell, it's an emotional thing for us. I'm sure you remember the details that we gave last time and the ones that I gave, so I'll just restate the main point. With the building facing south, we're going to see a brick wall. I brought some city council members in, showed them from my window, brick wall is all you're going to see. It will block the sunlight for most of the winter months, and that's not physically or mentally healthy for anyone. We can forget things like hot tubs and swimming pools for the kids, because any entertaining that we do in our backyard, we will now have an audience for with all the people on their balconies in the back. We do have a fourth concern with this building that we haven't mentioned before. As you can see, the flat part of the building, if it stays facing this direction, the flat part does create what he was referring to as an alleyway. For years, we have watched these kids at the school skip class, smoke, deal drugs, and things that I wish I could unsee. and things that I wish I could unsee back in that back part. It's going to give them a perfect access. They can hide from anyone they want. Right now, they're only hiding in the bushes. We were told at one point that we lost our chance to negotiate when we hired a lawyer. So we're having to rely on the council to listen to our concerns, come out and see it firsthand, and determine the next steps. We've all heard the one who shouts the loudest wins. Well, we've been on the receiving end of that, so even though our voices might shake a little more than some others, we are talking as loud as we can in defense of our homes, our families, and our neighborhood. And we ask that you please, 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 just put yourself in our shoes and think about what you would do if you lived on Oscar House Circle with this proposed in your backyard. Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. Any other comments on this item? Good evening.
Hi. Thank you for your time. My name is Keri Walland, and I live at 3,000 South Valley View Road, so I am at the end of the drainage of Oscar House Circle. It basically flows straight downhill into my front yard. The one suggestion I'd have for the detention pond is that we would like that piped straight into the city storm sewer. We don't want that as overland drainage, because that area already is overland drainage, and Valley View Road already has very few road inlets. So that would be, out of everybody else that has spoken, I would like that detention pond to drain straight into the storm sewer, not overground draining. Thank you.
Thanks, Keri. Any other input on this item? Good evening.
I'm going to try to put this underneath this thing. I've got a, nobody had this plan anywhere, so. Obviously, it's not going to go real big, but...
Could you just say your name, ma'am?
Okay, I'm Bridgette Myers, and I live at 6209 West Oscar House Circle. Thank you. When we purchased our home, we were told by the church that they would never sell or develop the land, which meant we would never have rear neighbors. It's a one-of-a-kind and established neighborhood, and we're best known for our Kingswood rummage sales. We have very few three-story apartments and large buildings all over our entire neighbor and extended neighborhoods. We were told about this project early this summer and brought to a meeting where we were shown this plan that you're seeing up here. The meeting was very heated, and the architect, church members, the engineer and developers were very arrogant and awful to our neighbors. We told the developers right away that we were not in favor of a building up next to our homes. We want the building facing the other direction and away from our homes. We told them that if the church wants to sell the property off, they can have the building up next to their property. It is not our fault the church is in financial hardship and needs to sell this land. Our property values should not be damaged over something we do not want. We express concerns about the water problems that the church has caused for a very long time. The developers were not aware of the water issues, and the church was not honest about these issues they knew were happening in the neighborhood. The church has flooded many times, and they knew when they built the church building there that it had a very high water table in that area. The church has been in financial hardship before and has sold land that has been developed and has created water problems for us. These same projects came through the rezone process years ago. The church was made aware of these issues and has not fixed them. There were parking lots added, clay and dirt moved and spread on property, which made problems worse for homeowners. The trust that the city is going to enforce, you can't make it worse, scares many of us, since they have never enforced it on the previous developments and projects that the church and other businesses have caused the homeowners in this area. The last time there was a water study done was in 2002. The city told us there were no water problems at that time. We never seen that water study to confirm that. We were also not sure if the water study was done before the funeral home and dentist building were built or parking lots were added to the church. The neighbors are saying each time more development was done, citizens complained to the city and church, and nothing has been rectified. The second church meeting, we were shown at the plan with the buildings turned around and two other plans. This meeting became heated again, and we were told if you don't agree to let the rezone go through, we're going to do whatever we want. The neighbors then had to hire an attorney to protect our property values and homes. We had a meeting with the city, just like they said, where we were supposed to meet to compromise. That was not a compromising meeting. That was a, here you go, this is what you're going to get, you better take it. So what I'm concerned about is that they told us that there was supposed to be an extensive water study that was supposed to take till January. It was magically done in three weeks, and it seems a little fishy to me that we were told a boring test would need to be done, and I didn't see that on the report. We were told there was supposed to be a groundwater study, and that wasn't done either. So I guess my concern...
Mr., excuse me. I would like to make a motion to allow this resident to continue to talk for another two minutes.
And I'm short. I've got two paragraphs here, two short paragraphs. All right, thank you. What I wanted to know is why there wasn't a groundwater study done, because we are having underground parking with this facility, and groundwater will be an issue with underground parking. So I want to know why the church was not held accountable by the city for the previous projects of making the problems worse for the neighbors. This whole process has felt like the planning and zoning has worked with the developers and not with the citizens. We are asking you to put guidelines on this project. Planning and zoning told us they cannot do that, that you guys have to put the guidelines on the project. So we're in front of you today, asking you to please consider putting some restrictions on this project. The citizens do not feel that the concessions that have been made were our requests, since they were virtually back to the original plans, which is only 60 feet back. In this plan, I want to show you that outdoor patio that's out there, that's going to be another 15 feet past the building. They're not showing you that tonight on your plans that you have in front of you. But that patio is going to be large, where they're going to have entertaining, and I'm showing you that, because that is also another 15 feet, so they're really not 60 feet setback anymore. We do not feel a three-story building is compatible for this neighborhood, and we're concerned about enforcement of water issues making problems worse. The one developer said that he is done once all the apartments are sold, so he'll be long gone when the water issues would arise after the project is complete. Our sunlight will be affected, and so will our view. I have made trips all over the city looking at your different buildings throughout the city. Shade will be an issue with a building of that size. That picture you're seeing in front of you is not an accurate view. Many of us garden and live in our backyard, so please understand the property values will be affected with a building that close to our homes. We're asking for your support in putting some guidelines on this project to protect our homes and property values. Thank you.
Come forward, sir.
Good evening.
My name is Arlie Brandy. I work at Brandy and Meadows Law Office here in Sioux Falls. I represent 31 families in the area. We invited you out to walk the property, because I drove it many times on Keene Park or Oscar House, and it just wasn't the same as when you walked the property. And three of you accepted that, and I think the three of you who did walk the property saw the concern that we had. the 30-foot penitentiary wall. The top of the structure proposed here is 52 feet above the ground. The imagination says that's about covering the entire photograph, and that's what you have to look at, 60 feet from your property line, 52 feet high. That's what you see in your backyard from the top of this building. This is the proposal, one of the two or three of the first proposals, and I just interposed the pond on it. On October 3, I have a note on that saying, "The developer said at the planning meeting, when you drive up to it, you don't want to look at the back of the building." So we have it facing that direction. Well, driving up to it is a three-minute ordeal, and looking at it 365 days a year from your backyard is certainly a horse of a different color. So what I'm suggesting to you is that this picture tells more than 1,000 words. Imagine living in one of those houses and looking at that monster, one and a half times the size of the penitentiary wall, for the rest of your life. I think if you're going to approve this, that you ought to have the developer face the building toward the north and give the landowners what they are requesting, and that is a little bit of air, a little bit of light, a little bit of sunshine. Thank you.
Thanks, Arlie. Any other comments on this item? Counselors, you have questions for city staff on this? Counselor Sale.
Yes. I would like Lance to come up and further explain the water study that they've done.
No, we have to take public input first, so if you're here to speak on that. If anybody else is ready to speak, please come up as soon as the person is completed, so we know who's here to speak on this. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Liz Snyder, and I live in Oscar House Circle. And as you've heard here this evening and in prior meetings, that there is some tremendous concern, not only from the Oscar House Circle, not only from Keene Park, not only from Valley View, but you've heard from other citizens in the city of Sioux Falls with regards to the development and planning and the responsibility that planning, zoning, and also you as city council members have to ensure that you, in your decisions, do not negatively impact those citizens, their homes, and the developments. Therefore, we ask for you to take that into consideration this evening in your decision. As you heard the developers say, they had a good working relationship with planning. At times, that's a very cozy relationship that leaves the citizens out. That needs to be considered also in your decisions. It also needs to be considered in the processes that are used to develop land, the input from the citizens, as well as the input from city planning and zoning. I think they've already mentioned the winter solstice and that being taken at noon, so I'm not going to rehash that issue. I am going to comment, however, on the affordable housing. Last time that we were here, the affordable housing was brought up as a positive for this development. This development would not meet the guidelines for affordable housing as they are established. Therefore, I do not think that testimony should be taken into consideration when deciding I guess I have no further comments at this time. However, I again think that we need to take into consideration the development, its situation of how it's situated on the land, how that will impact the property values of those citizens in that area, and how that development could be flipped, could be used to advantage of both property owners, the church itself, and also the developers. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Liz.
I also do want to, I guess, thank the counselors who did take their time and did take the input from the public and did come out to look at the land, to discuss it. And I would encourage all council members to do that on every project. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Chad Myers. I live at 6209 West Oscar House Circle. Not real good at this, but my 10-year-old son, tonight, we were looking out our back window, he said, "Why can't they put another neighborhood in there?" We all know that something could probably be built back there. Why can't we do twin homes, a two-story building, where it doesn't affect us as much? They could put in a road. If they can't make enough money off putting twin homes in there or a two-story, maybe they're paying too much for the land. The groundwater study, what we got was a drainage. They're going to put underground parking in here. How deep do they have to dig into the ground to put underground parking under there? Where's that water going to go? Where are they going to pump it? Those are some of my questions. What are they going to do with it? Are they going to pump it into the storm water? Where's our storm water going to go? Those are a couple of my questions, and those haven't been answered. Where's that water going to go? Thanks.
Thanks, Chad. All right, any other comments on this item? If not, Counselor Sale, you had a question for Lance.
Yes, I was wondering if those of us that are engineers, if you could explain your water study a little bit better for old farm boy like me.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Public. Lance Weatherly, representing Public Works. The water study looked at four main elements. Essentially, there was a concern that drainage from Keene Park Road was coming across the property in question, across backyards, to where the pipe is in the northeast corner of this conservation property. Another item we looked at is if this development released storm water at pre-1978 rates, was the city conveyance system adequately sized? Another thing we looked at, does the Valley View Road conform to engineering design standards? And there was a fourth item, I'm not recollecting offhand, but we, following a meeting with both the developer and the neighborhood on September 25, I did make a statement that I thought a study would take somewhere to two to three months. That would be a general timeline from going out, publicly advertising, routing a contract, completing the study. Subsequently, we do have an ongoing drainage improvements project in the area, engaged that consultant already contracted, so we were able to accelerate the completion of that, and thus why we're able to deliver some information to provide, shed some light onto this in a more expedient fashion.
Counselor Sale.
So Lance, my understanding of the detention pond is going to be built adequately enough to take the current runoff and the proposed runoff for the additional building?
Correct. Right now, there's about 13 acres that drains to that northeast corner, roughly about five to six acres right now, has rooftops and parking lot that heads toward that corner. What we are requiring is above our standard threshold to require that detention pond to release at no greater than pre-1978 rates, which is everything be grass, all 13 acres, it'd be equivalent to it being a grass runoff, which is much lower than it is today.
This will be my last question, Lance. Sorry. Could you, on this diagram, could you direct me on where the city storm sewer, if the detention pond flows over, a 100-year rain, where is that water going to go, and where is the city's input to the storm sewer system?
So in the upper right of that yellow triangle, from there, there's a 15-inch storm sewer that goes between the two homes in a 10-foot public easement out to Oscar House Circle and connects to the city's conveyance system. That has the capacity, that has the, and surface drainage in the 100-year event, it will utilize both that pipe and likely flow to the east overland to Valley View. A couple of things have been working with the developer, is a couple of options. Is the study identified to upsize those pipes or make that detention pond bigger to, in essence, route all drainage in the major storm within that pipe?
Thanks, Lance. Other questions? Counselor Selberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So that kind of went into my question, too. I mean, the drainage, obviously, is a serious issue with, and from what I've heard from you and from Jason and everybody over the last few weeks, you seem confident that this project will help solve this problem. Am I hearing that correctly?
I believe this project with the two-foot landscape buffer berm along the north side between that and the neighborhood, and with grading a swale to intercept drainage and route it to the detention pond, will inherently provide less water going into those backyards. Right now, when raindrops fall into the grass in the area south of the backyards of Oscar House, it does sheet flow north, and by building a two-foot landscape buffer berm with a swale behind that, that will intercept that and redirect it to the stormwater facility.
Okay. Thank you. I would just, you know, the only comment I have tonight would be, we do hear you out there, those in the neighborhood, and I can't speak for the whole council, but I know that it was my desire to send this back to planning when we did, to make the maximum effort we could to see the compromise could be made on the concerns of the neighborhood. We've been through the what's changed. We've been through it a bunch of times, but I don't recall in my time this many changes being made to an original plan. It's not... It's not perfect. You're still not happy about a lot of things, I understand that, but I do want to probably get across to this, that this has been, I can't even imagine the hours and time, I know that we all have put in on this, because it's not easy. As this town grows, we just get more and more of this, and there's no easy answers. But I hope that you folks do know that we've worked hard, and we're trying to find some answers and solutions and compromise, at least that's been my goal through all of this. So, we are hearing you, and I hope we're getting there. Thank you.
Councillor Kylie?
Thank you, Mayor. Lance, could you come back up, please? Lance, after I had been out to the property, I gave you a call last week and asked some of the same questions that Councillor Sale and Councillor Selberg have just asked. Just to reiterate again, on the northwest side, where there will be a berm, there will also be a swale in addition to the berm, and that swale will continue, or that, let's refer to it as a ditch, that is going to continue toward the detention pond along that north side?
Correct.
Okay, because currently, I can see where there is an issue with water flowing from this property into the backyards of the neighbors there. My question then, over on the east side, will the swale continue to ensure that the water flows towards that corner?
The swale will continue in a downward slope, so when water is within the swale or shallow ditch, it will go, flow by gravity into the stormwater facility. By having a requirement that runoff does not exceed pre-1978 standards, that means all water. So collectively, we look at that, it has to route that to the stormwater facility to meet that standard for us to permit.
When was the church built?
I believe the church was built in...
Eighty-five. So, after the '78? Nineteen seventy-eight? Okay.
The church was there prior to the development on Oscar House Circle.
Well, and I know when I talked to you, too, regarding the pipe that actually takes the water to Oscar House Circle, I know you mentioned at that time that you're looking into potentially increasing the size of that, as well as I heard this evening, too, that you're talking to the developer about the potential of making sure that the detention pond is larger, or at least large enough to make sure that it's going to accommodate the needs, and I would encourage the developer and us as a city to see to it that does take place. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Knightzert?
Thank you, and I hope you'll bear with me. I've spent the weekend kind of looking at sun and shadows, so I've had to go back to eighth-grade geography, and Lance, I won't need you for this, thank you. Because we seem to have these dueling shadow studies, and as I've looked into it, really, shadows, it comes down to, it's a function of distance, height, the angle of the sun, and I should point out that my single-family house casts a shadow on my neighboring property depending on what time of day it is and whatever else. So, we're all casting shadows on each other. The question is how much and how long? And so, I just want to go through a couple of basics, and I'm certainly not talking down, because I had to kind of relearn this really quick, too. The important things to know is that the sun casts shadows very dramatically throughout the day, and based on the day of the year. The length of a shadow cast on the ground is proportional to the sun's angle, in other words, how high it is in the sky. The sun is lowest at the beginning and the end of the day, obviously, rising in the east, setting in the west. The sun is highest when it is in the south. The higher the sun is in the sky, the less shadow a building will cast, because the sun is shooting more down than across. Just using simple terms. Because of the rotation of the Earth axis, the sun's height also varies based on the day of the year. So, that's why we've been talking about December 21st being the shortest day of the year. It's a winter solstice, that's the day the longest shadows are cast, because the sun is lowest in the sky. So, that picture you see would be what you would call the worst-case scenario, that's going to be the longest shadows cast. The highest in the sky is June 21st, the summer solstice. That's the day the shortest shadows are cast, because the sun is almost directly over the top of our heads. So, having a taller building to the south of the existing single-family is actually optimal, because it means the single-family homes that are most affected will have shadows cast on them when the sun is highest in the sky and the shadows are the shortest. And if you could go to the next screen. I'm going to show you a little video, and I have to give major, major...
Are we in council discussion? Are we in questions? I'm not sure.
I can make a motion if you'd like me to.
Just because we were engaging staff, and we're in the question period, and if this is council testimony, then I think we should go into the motion period.
We can have a motion on the table.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion approved by Knightzert, seconded by Councillor Erickson. You can continue.
Okay, thanks. So, major credit to the GIS department who was able to put this together for me, because I wanted to see, what are we talking about? You know, are these representative of what we would really see? But it is, they put the subject building in the location where it is proposed. We're looking at a bird's-eye view on the subject property on the east, looking to the west, towards Roosevelt High School, and we're going to see, this first one, we're going to see a time lapse for December 21st, 2018, which would be that winter solstice. This would be the worst-case scenario. All of the buildings will show the shadows that they cast. You'll see the shadows start long in the morning, because the sun is lowest, and as the sun goes up, then they're going to narrow. And then, let's just take a look at it real quick, and I'll try to talk you through it a little bit. So, up in the upper right-hand corner, you can see the time of day, and so it's going to show you kind of how the shadows go. Now, this is the worst day of the year. Now, this is running through the day, and you see it's kind of in the backyard, and then it's getting to afternoon, and now it's going that way. And I'll just let it spin around one more time. We could also do satellites, but this was a little cleaner, because you could see the footprints, and these are actual building footprints. This is where that building would be proposed to go. So, this is just the winter solstice. Now, as you can see, as the day goes on, it rotates and it turns. Why don't we go to the next one? So, the next one is the longest day of the year, and when we have the sun almost completely above the head, so this is going to be, quote-unquote, "the best-case scenario." So, let's go to that, and let's spin that around. If I have it in the right order. We'll see what we got here. Oh, this is a different one. Did we jump a slide, or no?
We did.
Okay. Okay. All right. So, this is June 21st, running morning till night. Now, the important thing to watch here is how short the shadows are going to be, simply because the sun is almost directly overhead. So, you see it creeping out right there, it's out maybe 10 feet or so, and the sun's coming around, and now it's getting towards nighttime, and now it's going to start lengthening, because the sun's in the west and the sun is going down. I'll just let that spin through there one more time. And as you would guess, throughout the year, this is going to change, because obviously the sun is higher and lower as the year goes on. So, I'm showing you the two extremes first, and then I'll show you one more, which is kind of a time lapse of the year. So, you kind of see how the sun is rotating. You see some other shadows. If you see a super-long shadow, it's actually the water tower in the distance, there's actually one of those. So, if we go to the last one, which I'll show you real quick, and then I will defer, so this is going to be on the 21st of each month, going throughout the whole year at the same time of day, so we just pick 3 o'clock, just to pick when it's in the middle of the afternoon, essentially. So, what you're going to kind of see is that the worst, quote-unquote, months, obviously, are going to be in the winter, when the sun is the lowest. And you'll just kind of see it jumping here. So, as you see, the warmer months, and now it's extending, now we're crossing the property line here, November, December. That's one time a day, by the way. Let's keep in mind that that doesn't mean that it's going to be over in the property all day long, that's just at 3 o'clock on that particular day. So, this was really helpful for me, because it really kind of showed, not just one snapshot in time, it kind of showed all types of the year. Now, of course, if you have an issue with the height, just because you just don't like a tall building, obviously, that doesn't address that issue, but a lot of things were talked about with the shadow. And I guess one other thing I would point out is, you could do a 35-foot single-family home and put it five feet from a property line, and that's 10 feet difference in height, and then when you put the averaging, maybe it's 42 feet high of a house. At 10 feet, or a five-foot setback versus 10 more feet of a building, 60 feet back, of course, that distance is going to change that shadow. Anyway, I thought that was very helpful, and I was appreciative of that, and I hope that might be helpful, so that helped me.
Thank you. Councillor Knightzert? Other discussion amongst the councillor questions? Councillor Sale?
Yes, on this matter, I just want to let the neighborhood know, and other neighborhoods if you have rezoning. I always make it a task for me to go to the neighborhood and look around. It might not be in the appointed time when it's available, but I've been there, been there many times. And this comes down to me for a lot of things that I know. The church is going to sell that property. It could be two large apartment buildings without coming to the council. This is a rezone, it's a step back. I cannot talk to the discussion between the developer and the planning department, the neighbors in the planning department, whether it was cordial or not cordial, whether you felt your voices were heard or not heard, but I know that my voices were heard when I talked to the people in the planning and zoning. I talked about drainage, which I know is a concern up there, and I think that's been solved to the best of our ability, and I know that when the planning and zoning people asked the developer if they could move it back to utilize the space to give more of a setback, that has been done. There's a nice berm going to go in. It's not the best-case scenario. I don't know of anybody that's raised their hand and said, "I want an apartment building in my backyard," but something's going to go in there. The church is going to sell that property, and it could be larger and more monstrous than is proposed in front of us. So, I'm going to give my support to this when the roll is called. Might cost me some friendships, but I think it's the best thing for the city.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Staley?
I did go out and walk the property, and I encouraged the neighbors to ask all the council members to be out there. Janet Breckie went with me. And walking with them, looking in their backyards, talking with them face-to-face, is just a common courtesy that I think we owe them. And they are right, the developer has had a lot of time spent with our city planning department. I agree with them. I think there seems to be a little bit of a double impetus towards these developers who get the get-go, get the AOK from the planning department. So, to me, that's a common courtesy, and I was hoping every councillor could go out and actually walk the terrain, and I don't believe that you're all going into their backyards and looking around to actually eyeball it. And I will tell you, from that video that they gave us, that over in the northeast area, that is a very big concern right over there. And to hear these concerns from these neighbors, we owe it to these people. And when we start talking about, "Oh, we've given so much time," and our staff, who, by the way, we pay quite well, and they do a great job, Jason, I've told you that before, you do, but they're working for us. We have a right to expect them to vet these things out, and we're working for the people. So, we have a right to do that as well. So, due process is important in our community, and as we move forward, and we have more apartment buildings being proposed and more people's backyards, this is going to be a big deal. And I'm hearing from people, what happened to the idea of transitory, transitional housing? We used to have it layered, and we used to have it modified. We didn't have these huge, big, abrupt living entities next to each other, and I don't want to alienate Mr. Mickelson. He and I have had a conversation on the phone, a little contentious. So, I have talked with him as well. But I don't believe that, I think there could still be a little compromise here. I believe that we could still come together, that the developer and the neighbors, I believe they could come together, and we could have a better product here. And again, I'm going to challenge my colleagues to actually go out and visit with the neighbors. So, I'm going to make a motion, and by the way, I still have, I've got a lot of unanswered questions here. I've got a question, can they technically, it's been brought up, can you have a big hospital next to a school? You know, if we're allowing, again, what the heck kind of things are we allowing to go in here and there? Haphazard, in my opinion. Anyway, I'm going to make a motion to defer this to November 20th, to Tuesday, November 20th, so we are going to give these people a little more time to try to come to something more amenable.
There's a motion on the table already, so we would need to amend that motion. There's a motion to approve this item by Councillor Knightzert, and seconded by Erickson.
So, you want me to say it as an amendment?
Substitute.
It would have to be a substitute motion.
I'm going to make a substitute motion to defer this to Tuesday, November 20th.
Second, Star. Excuse me.
Kate, we have a motion by Councillor Staley to move this item to the 20th of November, and seconded by Councillor Star. Councillor's discussion on that motion, substitute motion.
I also, I want to say, Councillor Knightzert, I don't know if this was your intention or not, but that thing you put up helped actually, helped create more empathy for me, empathy, excuse me, more empathy for these people. The shadow was like pretty incriminating, this huge monstrous thing in their backyard. I did talk with the people, they said, "We'd be open to having two-story buildings here. We just want it backed up a little bit." I've been told that it's going to cost the developer, he's already spent a lot of money, and he doesn't want to do this and that. So, anyway, that's why I just think, give it a little more time. These neighbors are wonderful people, they aren't liars. They are not liars, they're good people, and they have a right to be here and to be defending their quality of life in their own backyards.
All right, further discussion on the motion to defer to Tuesday, November 20. Okay, if not, I'd like a vote on that, please.
Councilmember Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
No.
Kylie?
No.
Knightzert?
No.
Selberg?
No.
Sale?
No.
Star?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
All right, that item fails, 5 to 3, so we are back to our original motion to approve the item by Knightzert, seconded by Erickson. Further discussion, Councillor Breckie?
You know, as I go through this, the reason I supported the motion to defer is, I, too, think that they're, you know, very, very close to coming to something that they might both be able to agree on, but maybe not. So, you know, it didn't pass, and so I think I have to prepare myself to make a vote, and I think I owe it to the neighbors and the listening audience to explain, you know, what my vote will be. For me, the main issues, you know, was the zoning issue and the fact that this is a downzone. I mean, I can't ignore the fact, I know the neighbors would like me to ignore it, but I can't ignore the fact that they already have the right to put a three-story building on this, and it could be a similar building, it could be assisted living, it could have been a nursing home. So, it's hard for me to just ignore that fact. The fact is, they had a right to put a three-story building, institutional building, on this piece of property, and I have to remember what the limitations that I have on me as a council member. I can't really change that. And so, in this situation, the fact that they're going to put that three-story building, I'm glad that it went from two to one. I'm, you know, extremely happy about the concessions that remain on the drainage. I mean, the fact of the matter is, as best I can tell, you know, the developers are actually, you know, taking care of part of the city's problem, because this problem is not all being created by this developer, it's been created by, and I did walk the property, and it really does make a difference, because I had driven by it before, but when I actually went out and walked it, I mean, I hope that they're going to do a good job of grading the whole thing and doing this right. But I was also, you know, very convinced by the statements made that, you know, they're looking at the developer with making the detention pond bigger, if it needs to be bigger, we have the ability to oversize that pipe if we need to oversize that pipe. So, I feel confident that we're in a position to get the drainage problem taken care of by the way that this is designed. And I'm understanding that this berm, you know, will actually help that, you know, as they're trying, as all of that's been designed to make that, you know, go down and go down in that corner and out that corner. So, I do believe that we're going to be able to take care of the drainage problem. If we don't, it will need to be looked at in the CIP project, because we'll need to oversize that pipe and take care of, you know, take care of that, take care of the city's responsibility on that, if the development doesn't do it. And then, for me, the thing that seems to be the real sticking point here, because assuming that we are going to take care of that drainage issue, the real sticking point here is the facing of the property to the north, you know, and I have looked at that and looked at that, and I really, I guess this is where, in these difficult decisions, you're here, you have to make a decision, and for me personally, I really struggle with putting a street in where now the berm is, and actually having a street in the front of your house and the back of your house. I know of one area, and I actually live right next to it, where that's done, that's not a good situation. You have two sidewalks, a sidewalk in the front... You have two sidewalks, a sidewalk in the front, a sidewalk in the back. You have a mature vegetated berm, we have a mature vegetation barrier in most of the backyards. There's some full tree growth, and that along with the six-foot, the six-foot berm and the vegetation on there, I think will certainly help. I know that's less than perfect, but I just want to tell you sincerely, I really don't think you want a street back there, and I don't really know how that would affect the drainage situation. So the fact that they've put it in the front and that they're going to shoot the traffic out, you know, through the church's property and, you know, over to the Keane Park Road, I just think that's a much better situation. So it's a difficult decision. I listened, I heard. I'm glad you got involved. I'm glad you came to the table and got some of these issues taken care of. I really thank both the neighborhood and the developers and the city planning office. We did send it back in hopes that, it just wasn't ready. And I know it's not perfect, but it's pretty darn close. So I thank everyone for their patience and their involvement, but I will be voting to approve this.
Counselor Erickson.
Thank you. I don't want to be redundant. I was not able to make the invitation the other day, but I did go to the property, just because I wasn't there exactly during that invitation. I don't live too terribly far from here, and I did go through, I've driven on Keane Park. We go to the tennis courts there and the pool there, and I did walk the property. And so I'm very familiar with this area. For me, this boiled down to being a downzone again. And I know it's not popular to hear that with the neighbors, but what could go there now, I couldn't support. Unfortunately, that's the way it is right now. And so if a project were to be this and be proposed, and I can support it, and somebody else is coming in and saying, "I'm going to put these two unlimited, it can be as high density as you wanted," that would be really challenging for me to be able to support, because it doesn't seem to make sense. And so for having this be very specific, the setbacks are much further. Again, I'll agree with Counselor Brecky with the road on the other side of having the cars constantly driving the road and the lighting. I think this will be much more quiet on this area. I do feel compromises have been made. I feel that this project really has changed drastically throughout the time. This is infill development, which is very different. Oftentimes, we see the city sprawl. And to be able to develop, and infill develop, is a good thing for the whole community. I understand if you live close to it, it doesn't feel like a good deal for you. I understand that you've enjoyed an amazing green space for many years, and now this development is being proposed to go there. I feel that the drainage will be addressed as well, and that's really exciting. Again, living not too far from there previously, that's a time that needs to be, it needs to be addressed. It's long overdue from being, to have that drainage looked at. So again, for me, it's the infill development, the downzone, and really, being an unlimited density would be very dangerous. And so for those reasons, I will be supporting this, this rezone.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Knightzert.
Yes, fair. Thank you. I'm going to also try to just hit the high points and not be terribly redundant. So whenever I look at these, you know, we have to look at the property owner and their rights, the neighbors' their rights, the comprehensive plan, and then the public good, what is good in the best interest of the city as well. This one is a tough one, because again, you've got vacant space, and suddenly you're proposed, you've got this coming at you possibly. Now, on the other hand, I also, I'm still struggling to figure out what conditions could we propose or put on apartment projects? Because we have a, I just still see that we just have a serious problem in this town of placing apartments unless they're in green, you know, unless a newly annexed area or something. It's very difficult, and then there seems to be a disconnect between, you know, so, and I haven't quite found the magic answer, because I've had some ideas, and those ideas would not have been sufficient in this particular case. So I would point out, the neighbors certainly do have a voice. They push us, they push planning, they push the developer to make things better and to be a little bit more sensitive. So what I saw initially the first time around versus what I see here, whether one chooses to call it a concession, or they had to do it because they were told, or whatever, the simple fact is, what I see here is far different than what, than what we were looking at originally. Same thing, same statement as Counselor Brecky. The building orientation, I get it wanting to push the building back, it just, I just can't, it just, it wouldn't feel right to say, "I'm going to put the parking lot in the driveway right behind your backyard" versus giving you landscaping. We looked at the shadow thing, we can all, we can all debate that. I think what it really comes down to, and this was touched on, even if you disagree with me on the judgment calls on all of this, there's one fact we keep avoiding, and it has been brought up tonight, but I think it's completely decisive. And the fact is, what it's currently zoned, and that was already stated. Could you, do you have that chart there that you could put up? Because I think this is, it's really important to look at. Because it is. Thank you. I mean, it is S1 now, so we have to look at, what is, I mean, this is a vested property right they have. We cannot take it away from them. We just can't. I mean, so they could go tomorrow and get a permit, and they could do what is in the S1. They could do a 45-foot setback, not a 60-foot setback. They could do apartments. The only difference would be there, the units would have to be above the first floor, so they could put garages, they could put offices, they could put common space, like a, you know, a meeting space for them, or they could put retail. There's all kinds of other institutional uses that could be used. The maximum units is unlimited, and as far as the categories of zoning density, it's higher. So really, what it comes down to is, we can't delude ourselves. This isn't a choice between nothing, the green grass and this, or single family and this, or twin homes and this. It's a choice between leaving it, which would allow a lot more closer to the existing single family, or taking up the applicant on their offer to voluntarily forfeit their rights and add restrictions to their parcel and downzone it significantly. We couldn't make them do it, but we certainly should take them up on their offer to do it voluntarily. Voting no on this would be a classic case of cutting off your nose to spite your face. Voting yes does not protect adjacent properties. It doesn't help the neighbors. It puts them in jeopardy of something far worse from their perspective. The developer is asking us to foreclose their right to develop half of this parcel and to downzone the other half, so that they can only do apartments and only up to 48 units, and quadrupling their required setback from 15 to 60 feet in an apartment zoning. And adding additional buffering is a condition. We'd be crazy not to take them up on their offer, and that's why I'm going to support this.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Staley.
I had a conversation with the Chair of the Planning Commission because of these issues that are coming up. So to say we're, this is just not a big deal is really a disservice to our people. And the Chair of the Planning Commission said, "We need to get together, and we need to be talking about what the council expects from us, and then we need to come together to find, to refine this thing, so we're not having these contentious things showing up at our doorstep and that they get worked out earlier in the game." And Counselor Brecky and I have had a discussion about how the old days, when these things did get worked out, and there was a more satisfactory result. So something has changed. We've grown. We've got this steroid kind of development thing happening. And unfortunately, again, I think it's residential homeowners that are getting the brunt of this. I'll bring up the Bretton 85th thing we had a year and a half ago. Once again, we have apartments being put 20 feet by the property line of these people, and we're told, "Well, shouldn't have built there." To, "Oh, buyer beware, you know, open field, stay away." And I mean, that, once again, is this where we're going in Sioux Falls? We want development to happen, but I think we need to work for some protections for homeowners, too. So moving ahead, I'm not going to be supporting this, because I think, I've got too many unanswered questions. I think it would have made perfect sense to defer this for a few weeks and let Mr. Mickelson and the neighbors get together and maybe talk, what can we do here? Is there something else we can come to, to make this a better product?
Counselors, any other discussion on this item? Counselor Brecky.
Just one more brief comment. I was looking at my notes, and I forgot to mention this. The other thing that weighs, is weighing really, really heavy on my decision here is I am really excited about this kind of living accommodation for seniors. I think there is an unmet need of that in the community. We have a lot of the Trail Ridge Bethany Homes, this kind of institutional-style living, the kind of communal living. But there's very few where a person that, you know, is independent can just go and buy a nice, you know, nice apartment or live in a nice apartment. And the location for them to be able to live here, it's a beautiful location. And if you think of, if you have anyone, you know, aging in your life, you know, I think you're going to have some really great neighbors, you know, actually. I remember I had a really dear friend who lived in one of those institutional-style places, and she had to go there early because she was blind, going blind, and she wanted to memorize it. But she would have never chose to live in one of those places. She said, "You don't even have kids come and trick or treat." You know, it can't even, you know, you're not part of anything, you're isolated. So this kind of style of living, I think there's going to be more of a demand for that in the future, because, you know, on the one hand, those places are kind of luxurious. On the other hand, people don't really enjoy living there. So a lot of them would just like to live independently in places like this. So I do believe there is a need for that, and I do believe this is a good location. And I do believe you're going to have some pretty cool neighbors.
Thank you, Counselor. I'm going to call for a vote on this item, please.
Councilmembers Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
Staley?
No.
That item passes seven to one. Item 26, please.
Item 26 is a second reading. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at 608 West 57th Street from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District to the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District number 91292018, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval seven to one.
Excuse me. The applicant here is Pat Beckman. The owner is Carol Hanson. This is located at the northeast corner of West 57th Street and South Duluth Avenue. It's roughly 1.25 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at subdividing this 1.25 acres onto three lots. And then each of these lots, they are looking at constructing a twin home. And the rough valuation that the applicant gave us is roughly $600,000 per unit, so about $1.2 million per lot. I know the applicant is in attendance tonight. I know there are several neighbors also in attendance that are, voiced their opposition to this specific rezoning.
Thank you, Jason. Is there anyone from the public here to speak on this item this evening? Good evening.
Good evening. Renee Rydel, 4705 South Duluth. I want to thank Council Staley and Selberg and also Knightzert for coming out in person. And I assume some of you maybe drove through the area to and took a look at it. And our biggest concern is, the development looks beautiful, but this is zoned, single family. We were told it would stay single family. All of the lots are uniquely sized and quite large, and we have a lot of concern about changing it and do not see the need to change it to a duplex townhome, because we're single family all the way around. There is a lot of concern about congestion on that corner, excessive amount of development. We have limit the drainage that is already a problem. Every single homeowner in that area has experienced drainage problems already. I know that they say they have addressed this, but my concern is, why do we need to change it? If it can be developed into twin homes or townhomes, it can be developed into single family, which we are not opposed to, and we hope that a reputable builder will build something comparable to what's already there. And it will be much more conducive to what is already there. So we're just asking that you please retain it as a single-family area as it was intended by the owners who are selling this property.
Thank you, Renee.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak on this item this evening? Good evening.
Good evening. I apologize, my voice is not very good. If you have trouble hearing me, let me know, but it sounds worse than it is. My name is Linda Stotts. I live at 4504 South Duluth, three homes to the north of this property. And I did send an email, my husband and I did, on two occasions, the last of which was addressing our concerns with the water issues. We personally have experienced a lot of expense in our own home with issues of the springs in the area, as well as the water that drains from all the properties above and behind us. And we know that Mr. Beckman has addressed this, but, you know, until you live there, I don't think you can fully appreciate the damage water can do. And whether he will do it to the level of the expense that many of us have had to deal with on our own properties is still a question in my mind. When we moved into our home over 20 years ago, I remember leaving for work, going out of Batchell around to Minnesota Avenue a little bit before 6:00 in the morning, and being the sole car on Minnesota. And now it is like a mini rush hour, the traffic on Minnesota at 57th and also 57th up there by Duluth. If you imagine being at that intersection where those homes will be on the left, the cars that come up at that speed of over 45 miles an hour, how fast they drive, you don't see them until they crust right at Duluth. There's a stop there, but it is a pretty dangerous intersection. And during rush hour time, whether it's on Minnesota now with all the added traffic or on 57th Street, that is a very busy corner. To add three twin homes, six driveways more coming out with potentially teenagers and other cars parked down the street, and adding to that congestion up there will be a significant traffic issue. So in closing, a few years ago, this property was for sale for $725,000. It was proposed as either a single lot or with the option to split it into either $425,000 or a $300,000 lot. At the end of the Planning Commission meeting that I attended, I saw Mr. Beckman and mentioned that to him, and he kind of laughed off and said, "Well, I'm not spending anywhere near that. Nobody's really told us what he's spending, but if you could get that land for, say, $400,000 now." I'm told that it is uncommon in nicer areas of town to have lots for about a couple hundred thousand dollars. So if that's true, can we try to make the effort to maintain our neighborhood and have two very nice, high-end homes built there, which he says up to 600, but I think he kind of said that would be the max? So I don't know exactly where he's going to end up with, but say there are 500, you put six of them in there, that's 3 million. You could probably put a couple of nice $1.25 million homes up there, which would go with our neighborhood. And I think they would sell, because it's hard to find that kind of property where we live.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak on this item? Good evening.
Good evening. Tom Herman, 4701 South Duluth. Just real brief, we've expressed most of our concerns for all of the things that we've mentioned, but my major one would be is changing the character of the neighborhood for something that's already been zoned, single family. And my question to the council would be, how does a landowner and a developer get to this point and almost literally have 16 homeowners opposed to it and have no voice? It's down to 2 to 16. So I question whether it's a fair process when you go to rezone in an area which is single family, has been listed as single family, and the character is single family, and all of a sudden you want to change that whole avenue with twin homes? Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Is there anyone else here to speak on that item tonight?
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Pat Beckman. I am the proposed developer of this property. I guess one thing that was just stated that is kind of misleading is that, yes, at one time, Lowell Hanson had this property for sale for over $700,000, but it was almost three times the size of the piece that I am buying. And his wife kind of got after him, and the portion that it was rezoned then, or that was replanted, is being kept as his backyard. So that's a lot of difference as to what he proposed to sell and what he ended up selling. The... The, uh, homes are, as you know, and I'm sure the city is, or the planning has told you, there's, last year there was more twin homes sold in the city of Sioux Falls than what there were single family. There is a desire of people and my study has said that people want to have high-end twin homes. The estimated value is somewhere plus or minus 600. The reason for that variance, of course, is any of you would know that it, each person wants a different finish in their house. Uh, some may not finish the lower level, which would definitely change their price. Some would want Formica tops and some are going to want marble tops. So there is where the variance comes as to the price. Uh, the last gentleman stated that there was 16 people against this project. I don't know if that's right or wrong. There was 10 letters sent to the city. Uh, and I don't know, does this show up on, on your map? This shows you where the 10 letters, at least where the letters that went to the city are from. Two of them are down on Bachelor Lane, uh, far to the north. One house faces Minnesota Avenue and the other one faces Bachelor. Uh, two of the letters are from people that live in the townhomes and the townhomes were established in 1983, long before any other housing was built out there. Uh, one house is on the south side of Min, of 57th and looks to the west. So it may or may not be against it. I don't know, but it's just an indication of where the housing is from. Uh, reasons against it-
Mr. Mayor, I, I would like to make a motion to allow this, uh, citizen to speak for two more minutes.
Yep, approved. Go ahead, sir.
The reasons that they are against it, we have heard, is that it will decrease the value of their homes. Uh, I've been in this business for about 45 years and I've heard that argument a lot of times and there's been absolutely no proof, either sitting on the planning board or buying and selling anything. Traffic, city says will be minimal. The water is not a problem. Uh, the city dumps water in on a 12-inch pipe off of 57th. On the far northwest corner of this project, the water empties out on a 30-inch pro, uh, pipe. Some of our water definitely will go out onto Duluth, just as all the other houses in the neighborhood. Majority of it will go to the east and down the back. Uh, there is a ditch that runs right along the east property line and that ditch will vary anywhere from... Excuse me. The ditch will run anywhere from, uh, 12 to seven feet above, I mean below, the street levels. So there should be plenty of capacity to handle any kind of project that would be going in there, whether it be multifamily or single family or a twin home. There was a question, uh, raised as to whether we bring in a lot of fill dirt and there's not because the dirt coming out of the basements will be used up against any type of retaining wall needed. The total amount of dirt that my engineers have estimated is about 15 to 20 truckloads. That's five to seven truckloads per building. Last, uh, note, as you, planning will tell you, we could go down to six 50-foot lots, according to the city engineering's office at the present time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Beckman. Is there anyone else here to speak on this item this evening? Good evening, ma'am. Come forward, please.
Hi, my name is Karen Schultz. I'm 4604 South Duluth. And I guess I just had one question. Mr. Beckman just showed a map of the lots, but I thought there had been another replat. So, um, there's a lot in the middle, it's Lot 7. How is that going to be rezoned? I think it was recently replatted, so we're going to have twin zone, or twin homes in the area that I have marked rezoned. What's going to happen to the lot to the east of that? And then there's another lot that I think is the buffer lot for Lowell Hanson's property. But what's going to happen be, behind those twin homes that are being proposed? Is that land also going to be rezoned? Are we going to have a huge, even more twin homes that'll be developed on that area? That's my question.
Thank you, Karen. Other public input on this item? Come forward, sir.
Hello.
Good evening.
This is Dwayne Rydel, 4705 South Duluth. And I'll be very brief. Um, my concern is, I don't, you have that picture where you show the houses up above and stuff there? If, if I could just show that. My concern, because me and my wife own twin homes and we own townhouses, but we bought them where it was already planned and developed. Now, where we live, right on the corner up there with the pool, will have three driveways there. And, uh, the driveways are going to be, what, 20, 25 feet long? Um, we're used to congestion owning other properties, uh, where our twin homes and townhouses are. There's a constant, uh, constant battle for parking and access. Um, we have the church there, taken, uh, street parking now. Now we're going to have these. Um, by your allowing this, where those lots could have been single family homes, if you approve this, we're going to face, you know, the, the troubles with parking and other things in our area that we didn't expect as single family homeowners. And last but not least, I just ask that you guys, imagine if it was yours and where the city is going, I think the homeowners, uh, properties surrounding homeowners have some rights too. And their opinions should be heard. We want better the community, but I think when we look ahead, we're changing this drastically from single family zoning, which it was not done before. And I just hope in your, uh, when you go through and make your decision that you'll consider where we're going for the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Dwayne. Anyone else here to speak on this item? All right, councilors, you have questions for Jason or any city staff on this? Counselor Selberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would I be able to ask Mr. Beckman a question?
Yeah, Mr. Beckman, can you come forward, sir?
So there seems to be a couple of concerns that I heard, um, like a concern about some kind of a sliding scale. I think you touched on it, but there seems to be this concern that it's going to start out as this is what you have in mind, but it could change and it could, you could do something different with the development or smaller, build a smaller scale type of thing. I mean, how, if, is there any alterations other than the fact that, like you said, people will have different finishes or whatever that might be? That might affect value, but are, you know, if it didn't sell at 600, somebody's going, well, then maybe he's going to downsize it and sell it for 300 or there's a... Can you speak to that a little bit? Does that make sense?
Somewhat. Uh, first of all, the city has right-of-way, uh, told me I have to make a change and that's on the south unit. The, uh, way we had that laid out originally, the driveway is too close to the intersection of 57th. So, yes, there will be some change in that line. Uh, my proposal is to do the 22, 2400 square foot on the main floor. As I said, there's a, from my studies, there's a need for high-end twin homes. A lot of those people that, uh, will buy this are going to be gone usually two, three, four months a year. Uh, I don't see them having a lot of big parties where they're going to be needing parking and I sure don't see that price tag of having a whole lot of teenagers driving very fast. But the intent is to stay in that 21 to 2300 main floor size.
To keep it kind of, it should, keeping in that, doing the square footage in that nowadays, that should keep it in that range. I mean, I, I know it's been brought up too. Well, if we could have a reputable builder who'd come in and maybe build single family, well, I mean, as far as what I know about you, I am in the real estate industry and I mean, your reputation, like you've been in, I don't know, 40 years and you've built quite a few things. I don't know any of them that have been low to, low end or mid-end. Um, so anyways, just trying to get that value question added. And then just, you did touch on this, if you could just maybe tell me one more time, the concern about water, that this could somehow make it worse? Why is that's not so? Just so I have that straight?
Well, I, I think the water problem is that some of the people to the north of us had came from the east off of their back neighbors and nothing that was coming from any type of a construction that would be done here. As I said, if you look where the far north end, the elevation, and I can't quite see what it is, but there's the pipe that goes under that proposed street, which the city required Lowell to, uh, dedicate, is seven feet below the street level. So any of our water is not going to go in and affect any of the people there. Most of the homes to the north are anywhere from four to six feet above street level the way they're constructed. So our water will go, some will go down Duluth and there's, uh, I think it's four drop-inlets along Duluth. The majority of it will go to the east, down the drain, down that back drainage area and out through the 30-inch pipe.
Okay. All right, thank you. Other questions, counsel? Counselor Kylie?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, and I have been out to this site probably a half a dozen times and I've driven up and down Duluth from Bachelor Lane and around Minnesota Avenue. I've talked again with Lance about the water and how it currently drains and how it'll drain, uh, because, I mean, that was a concern, especially for the individual down on the bottom of Bachelor Lane there at the end of Duluth. Um, and I had all of my, all my concerns about the water drainage were adequately answered.
I hate to be a nuisance, but point of order again. Are we in council discussion or we're at Q and A?
We're at Q and A with, uh, any staff. Do you have questions for staff, Counselor Kylie, or shall I call for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Motion to approve by Counselor Kylie.
Second, Erickson, and can I, point of order to the attorney, does it matter?
Absolutely not.
Do we have to have a motion on the table or can we, um, have council discussion and/or ask questions of staff?
Well, I don't know that it matters legally. Sorry. I don't, I don't know that it matters legally, but from a procedural point of view, I don't think it hurts for purposes of courtesy for the staff. So I think as a point of order, it's-
Okay, thank you.
So there's a, there's a motion on the floor by Counselor Kylie and seconded by Erickson to approve this item. Counselor Kylie, you can continue.
Well, I would just say too, that we can, we can, uh, ask staff to come forward at any point, whether it's before a motion's been made or whether it's after it's been made. But, um, I was going to say that, uh, I live in an area where, uh, the property behind us was zoned residential as well. And then they came, and this is well before I was on the council, and they, uh, proposed a change from single to, to twin homes, which currently exist. There's actually 15 twin home units behind me, so 30 different houses, homes. Um, I walk my dog regularly on their private drive. Um, and I'll have to say that it's rare that I ever encounter one vehicle when there's 30 opportunities. So I'm, I'm not convinced that traffic is going to be an issue with this particular project. And regarding the twin homes here, uh, townhomes are in existence just on the other side of Duluth Avenue and, uh, a few, few houses down on Duluth. Um, I'm not certain how the townhomes would be any different from upscale twin homes that are, that are being proposed here. Uh, and, and I know that that was addressed and, and some of you admitted that the townhomes were in existence before you bought your properties. Um, I, I will say that the people that live behind me, uh, they're great neighbors and they're, for most part, they're, and, and these were twin homes that are selling for half of what these are going to be selling for. I'll add that. And, and most of them are, are retired professionals, uh, that are just, like I said, great neighbors. I'm glad to have them there. Um, and I just, one other thing that I'd like to, it hasn't been brought up tonight, but I know that we'd had several emails expressing concern about your information not getting to us. And I just want to clarify that your emails have been available to us, uh, online, uh, prior to the first reading that we had a couple of weeks ago. Uh, we, we operate off what we call red notes. Uh, and in the red notes on each item, it says, "See electronic attachments on site for more information." And all we have to do as councilors is, and go there and see. Uh, and there were 15 different letters, 15 or 16 different letters that were posted already prior to the first reading. So your information was provided to the city council, so there isn't any, uh, uh, effort to hide that information from us. I just wanted to make that clarification. And these red notes are available to every one of us. Uh, in fact, there were probably at least street council members at the meeting where the red notes were actually developed. And, uh, so that information was there for us. And I appreciate your, your input too.
Thank you, counsel. Other input on this, Counselor Staley?
So Jason, just, uh, just a logistical question. If someone does get, get rezoned and they're going to, if Mr. Beckman is successful here, um, then is there any mandatory square footage that he has to do?
Uh, there wouldn't be for, through our zoning ordinance. Uh, they, some private developments have what we call covenants, where they have minimum square footage. Uh, if that's something that Pat Beckman would do as part of his development, he could file those. Those are all private. Um, I'm not aware of anything that's already currently within the neighborhood, but there are ways to do that.
And this, and the city, your department or any entity could not force him to have a certain, um, price point for his development?
I don't believe that's, that's part of a condition that you as a council can place on a rezoning. You can place conditions for increased setbacks, lower heights, you know, those kind of things. But to put a price, I would say that that's not something that you would be allowed to do.
And one more, is that road a standard-sized road?
Duluth would be a standard, I would say, local street.
It seemed like it was a little smaller, maybe because of lack of sidewalks or-
I, I would say it's 60 feet or the normal local street that, that we would have on, on this specific area throughout the city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Other discussion on this, councilors. Counselor Nitzer?
I'll just say, this one is really unique because obviously we just got done talking about rezoning, uh, you know, for apartment uses. So obviously this seems like small potatoes in the grand scheme of things. I, I, having gone out there, I, I see what, I see what they're getting at and it's one of those things where you wish that the property owner would have put the same covenants on their property that apparently were put on others because it's an existing, you know, the, the interesting part is you have 25 and 50,000 square foot lots, you know, or mine is 5,800 or 6,000 or something like that. Um, which is pretty, which is very standard in, in suburbia. But, um, I mean, these are, it, it is very interesting, but, and, and what's, I, what I heard loud and clear from them is what's frustrating for them is that even with the existing zoning, somebody could subdivide and, you know, they could build a $150,000 home or whatever, you know, and it, and, and I- and I, I, I get that. I hear that concern. I'm not sure what we can do about it. The thing with the twin home, the only difference, interestingly, is really the zero setback between the, the party wall. Otherwise, all the setbacks are the same. The regulations are basically exactly the same. It's all, that's really the only difference. They could chop it up and do six single-family homes if they wanted to. I mean, in complete harmony, you would expect to see two or three large lots. And so I, yeah, I don't, I don't know. It's, it's a, it's a weird one. So I don't have a great answer.
Thanks, counselor. Other discussion, counsel, on this item? Counselor Selberg?
I would maybe just add quickly, I mean, thank you to Renee and Tom and Karen in the neighborhood for having us out. And I, and I do hear you. And I think that what it comes down to, kind of where I'm thinking on it is, if this was Fly-by-Night Industries coming through with kind of a, we haven't heard from them and this project's kind of iffy and whatever, I would get it a little bit more. Judging by the reputation and history of the developer, I think that you're going to see a first-class product come in that I think might mesh with your very nice homes a little better than you think. And I think in return, they're going to get the same type of clientele, would be my, my thoughts on this, after giving it some heavy consideration. And I, you know, if the water, if there, that's going to be taken care of. I mean, just in summary, I think that it's going to turn out a little bit better than you think. So, but again, it's not an easy issue. Again, we're talking about changing a neighborhood. It's always an emotional issue, but I'm probably coming down on the side of supporting it. But I did hear you and I appreciate you reaching out. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Any further discussion, counsel? If not, a call and a vote on this item, please.
Councilmembers Breckie?
Yes. Counselor Breckie wanted to say something.
That's okay.
Called for a vote, Counselor Breckie?
Yes. Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
No.
All right. That item passes 7 to 1. Item 27.
Item 27 is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 1201 South 7th Avenue from the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional District to the RT2 Town Home Residential Traditional District number 9171 2018. And amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls, Planning Commission recommends approval 8 to 0.
The applicant and owner here is John Cook. It is located at 1201 South 7th Avenue. As you can see, it's just west of the Avera McKenon Main Campus. It's roughly .15 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at subdividing the existing large single-family house into three units. And then he's also looking at constructing another parking area that would accommodate those additional units.
Thanks, Jason. Is there anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Counselors' questions for Jason on this?
Move to approve.
Second, Erickson.
Move to approve by Counselor Kylie, seconded by Erickson. Any discussion, counsel? If not, a vote on this, please.
Councilmembers Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
That item passes 8 to 0. Item 28.
Item 28 is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 700 South 1st Avenue from the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional District to the RT2 Town Home Residential Traditional District number 9173 2018. And amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls, Planning Commission recommends approval 8 to 0.
The applicant and owner is also John Cook. This is located at 700 South 1st Avenue. It's .17 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is we're looking at matching the correct zoning of the RT2 to the existing use of a property, which is a four-unit converted house.
Thank you, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Counselors' questions for Jason on this? Look for a motion?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Selberg.
Move to approve, Erickson, seconded by Selberg. Any discussion? If not, a vote, please.
Councilmembers Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Sale? Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
That passes 8 to 0. I just would like to, as an aside, thank John Cook. He's actually here. He does a great job reinvesting in our core properties, which is very important for our city. So thank you for your work on these men. Next item, item 29.
Item 29 is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 1,001 East 52nd Street North from the I-1 Light Industrial District to the I-2 Heavy Industrial District number 9178 2018. And amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls, Planning Commission recommends approval 8 to 0.
The applicant and owner here is Donovan Ludens. It's located at 1,001 East 52nd Street North. It's roughly 1.51 acres. The purpose is we're looking at correcting the zoning to match the current use of a heavy industrial concrete cutting company. And they're also looking at constructing a substantial addition on the east side of the existing building.
Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak to this item? Counselors' questions for Jason on this?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Sale.
Move to approve, Erickson, seconded by Sale. Any discussion, counsel? A vote on this, please.
Councilmembers Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
All right. That passes 8 to 0. Item 30.
Item 30 is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 801 North Duluth Avenue from the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional District to the RT2 Town Home Residential Traditional District number 9182 2018. And amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls, Planning Commission recommends approval 8 to 0.
The applicant and owner here is Cristobal Valquez. It's located at 801 North Duluth Avenue. It's roughly one, or excuse me, .15 acres in size. And you can see by the aerial, he's got an existing garage that is pretty much on the property line right off the street. We are looking at rezoning this to match the, the correct zoning of the property. It's currently a five-unit converted house. And then the applicant is looking at constructing or tearing down that existing garage and pushing the parking lot farther to the north and constructing a hard-service parking area for his residence.
Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Counselors' questions for Jason?
Move approval, Nitzer.
Second, Sale.
Move to approve, Nitzer, seconded by Sale. Any discussion, counsel? If not, a vote on this, please.
Councilmembers Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
That item passes 7 to 0. Next item.
Item 31 is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 500 East 69th Street from the O-O Office District to the C-2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District number 9296 2018. And amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls, Planning Commission recommends approval 8 to 0.
The applicant is Hydenman Hospitality. The owner is Sato LLC. This is located at 500 East 69th Street. It's the old Calloway's building. It's roughly 2.94 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they are looking at converting the existing Calloway's Restaurant to a Looks Market Restaurant. The existing Calloway's Pub would be converted to the Looks Market Retail Store. And then the existing banquet space, they were looking at converting into some additional offices.
Okay. Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Counselors, do you have questions for Jason on this?
Move approval, Erickson.
Move, seconded by Erickson, seconded by Sale. Any discussion? A vote on this, please.
Councilmembers Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
That passes 7 to 0. Next item.
Item 32 is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 616 South Willow Avenue from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District to the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional District number 9319 2018. And offending, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls, Planning Commission recommends approval 8 to 0.
The applicant and owner here is Robin Erickson. It's located at 616 South Willow Avenue. It's about .16 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is we're looking at match the correct zoning that, for the existing structure, the current house doesn't meet the setbacks of the RS zoning district. So we're rezoning it down to RT1. And then they also want to construct an addition to the existing attached garage.
Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on that item? Counselors' questions. Eric, Counselor Erickson?
Thank you. I just want to make sure it's clear for the record that I am not related to Robin Erickson. We share the same last name, but there's no relation. And with that, I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion approved by Counselor Erickson, seconded by Kylie. Any discussion, counsel? A vote on this item, please.
Councilmembers Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
All right. That passes 8 to 0. Item 33.
Item 33 is a first reading to set a data hearing and second reading for Tuesday, November 13th, 2018 at 7:00 PM. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, providing supplemental appropriations.
Good evening, Mark.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This is a good news story that we've, we've collected or expect to collect the additional $980,000 in arterial street planning fees above the budgeted amount. And so we can get those funds into the system and start to design and queue up projects for spring. We would ask for your support to have this first reading to appropriate those dollars.
Thanks, Mark. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item? Counselors' questions for Mark on this?
Move to approve.
Second, Sale.
Move to approve by Kylie and seconded by Sale. Discussion, counsel? A vote on this, please.
Councilmembers Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
All right. That passes 8 to 0. Item 34.
Item 34 is a first reading to set a data hearing and second reading for Tuesday, November 13th, 2018 at 7:00 PM. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, providing provisional supplemental appropriations for snow removal operations.
All right. Just to recap, earlier this year, we had six plowable events, 16 de-icing events, and, and received 59.8 inches of snow. Our typical season is about 44 inches of snow. So I, we had a very active spring, as you guys know. We, we are bringing this budget supplement as an abundance of caution. If we, between now and the end of the year, have about two modest plowable events, we'll be able to do those with existing budgeted funds. This additional $1 million would be provisional in nature. We've worked closely with the finance team. We would only pull it in if those funds are needed, and our hope is to not need them. And so the last time we did this was in 2015. That was provisional in nature as well and did not need those funds. Just with the normal appropriation process being about 45 days, we would ask for your support so we have the funds ready to go if the weather does turn bad on us.
Thanks, Mark. Anyone from the public like to speak on this? Counselors, do you have questions for Mark on this? Counselor Starr?
Yes. Thank you, Director Cotter. I guess I'm, someone asked me this today and I'm trying to balance it in my head. How do we have $1 million of unobligated funds just available to use for this? Something had to be cut or changed or how do we, I mean, is that normal to have that size of fund? Or what is our general fund balance then if that's unobligated?
We'd have to bring the finance team in on that. But you have a, you have a ordinance that requires that at the end of every year that you have at least 25% of the prior year's budgeted funds in the bank. And you've always hit those targets. And so I believe it's in excess of $40 million that's of unobligated funds that this would be pulled in from if it's needed.
So technically, we're taking it from the reserve fund?
That's exactly right.
That's where I was headed. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Other questions for Mark?
I'll move to set the data, second reading for Tuesday, November 13th.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Erickson, seconded by Counselor Breckie. Any discussion on this? A vote on this, please.
Councilmembers Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
All right. That passes 8 to 0. Item 35.
Item 35 is a first reading to set a data hearing and second reading for Tuesday, November 13th, 2018 at 7:00 PM. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending Chapter 117, Peddlers and Vendors, Subchapter Right-of-Way Allowances in the Central Business District generally to allow natural gas fire pits in furniture zones.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Erickson?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Each of you, as well as the public, has access to the proposed ordinance. And so what I plan to do is just give you a little oversight with that and then also ask Counselor Breckie and Nitzer to certainly chime in as we've worked collaboratively to write this ordinance. Really, the whole, the whole intent and the object behind this was to enact common sense regulations that protects the public and embraces the opportunity to expand downtown outdoor dining into the spring and fall. And so as we walked through this with constituents and a couple of businesses in the downtown area as far as what this would look like, there was a little miscommunication as far as one that did go in that was not allowed. And so we want to allow that to happen and afford others the same opportunity. And so with that, in the ordinance, it does add the, the gas line fire pit in the furniture zone. It creates a fire pit installation permit, which would allow for the installation of a natural gas fire pit in the public right-of-way in the central business district. So I want to make sure that's clear, that this is only in the downtown central business district. The fire pit use permit is an annual permit for the use of natural gas fire pit in those right-of-ways set forth in this chapter. Through this ordinance, it does have a fee of $35 for the fire pit installation. It will be put in the, the right-of-way. And through the, if you look at the permit for those furniture zones, that will need to be adjusted as well to list fire pit on there. We didn't specify that in this ordinance, because we want to give that latitude to the departments to make those work as best as they would like. Throughout this ordinance too, there's just a little bit of cleanup language, changing the community development title to Planning and Development Services, since that department has changed recently. And then really where the meat and potatoes is in this ordinance are on page eight and nine. And it really creates a new section in there. What also this fire pit, or what else this ordinance does is it requires those businesses downtown that they have to be on the 211. They have to be connected. They have to be clear and visual as far as where those gas lines are. We're requiring them to have a shut-off valve and remote for emergency, as well as inside and outside. We are requiring them to have insurance. And we also are requiring them to be reviewed when the fire marshal does come through. They will review them on there as well, kind of just walk through, making sure that they're operating correctly. We also did connect, create a distance for where the fire pit can go and as far as how far from the building, how far from the sidewalk, and how far from furniture in those furniture zones. And so essentially, one that would use a fire pit would have to get rid of possibly two tables in order to have this. And so that's certainly the decision of those business owners to be able to do. The other thing in the ordinance, there is great latitude within those departments. the ordinance, there is great latitude within those departments. They have the ability to revoke this permit if it's used not in the way it was intended, and so there, that has always been in existence, and so that is there as well for the revocation and suspension of those. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know I kind of went through it quickly. This has been six months of meetings and making sure that we're doing this in a careful manner, but also what the whole goal was is to really create that ambiance in the downtown atmosphere. I know that there are some folks here that may speak or ask, answer any questions that you have regarding to other issues. So with that, I would ask for your support to send this to the second reading.
Can I ask for a motion on that from you?
Move to approve.
Second.
I think we need to take public input.
We did take, oh, we didn't take public input on this yet. I apologize. Is there anyone from the public who would just speak on this? You sat here all night, man. I'm sorry, I almost forgot about you.
Grant Taubman, 1510 South Phillips Avenue. Appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with you today. I've been around the downtown since, you know, investing down here since the late 90s, and there's been different phases through our, I'll call it our envy of other communities like ours, whether it be the art that we've kind of put downstairs with the Art Walk, the Phillips Falls, the Pavilion, other different features that we continually push our downtown to be the most progressive downtown that we can be. And I saw some of these fire pits in Rapid City, I've seen them in Milwaukee, Wisconsin, there's some in Vale, Colorado, where you create in these public spaces these warm elements, these ability to extend your hours for your retail and for your restaurants downtown. And that's kind of where it kind of developed, and I went to the, to some of the items to see where you could or couldn't do it, and I started looking at the propane tanks, and the propane tanks are clumsy, you got to refill them, they're inefficient, they're expensive to maintain, they tip over, they dent, they get banged up, they get shuffled in and out, and I saw these permanent fire pits as something that, to me, can continually bring people from out of the downtown, or people that aren't familiar with our downtown, or people that are heading from Minneapolis to the Black Hills, that Sioux Falls is now becoming a tourist destination, and it's because of our downtown. And that's kind of where this all came about. It was about safety, it was about a cheap form of energy, which natural gas is, propane tanks are under pressure, natural gas, it's, I think it's at like seven pounds pressure or something is what it comes out. There's the ability to shut it off and maintain it. It just seemed like such a more positive element. I didn't think it would cause some of the problems, or at least the Argus Leader, I think, kind of didn't exactly get the story completely correct, but I would very much urge all of you to support the fire pit, and I appreciate the hard work that the counselors did, the three counselors that did that helped with this, very much so. So, any questions at all?
Possibly. We'll call you back up if there is. We'll call you back up if there is. Thanks, Grant.
Thanks, Counsel.
Good evening.
I think the Argus Leader did a wonderful job. So we always doing the downtown area for safety here, and I'm not going to get into it, but I just worked a case here with the police department on the downtown area and how safe it is. And the downtown area is so beautiful for business.
Is this related to the fire pits?
It is, yes, it is. So we have, oh, we need the fire pits to bring in business, but we have drug dealers that are selling 350s and putting marijuana downtown, but we're going to make it beautiful downtown by putting these pits. So why can't we, the councilmembers, help downtown and get this crime out of downtown that we're working on from gang members out of this, out of the state of St. Louis, Missouri? So these fire pits and this safety issue, and let's bring more tourists, the downtown area is full of tourists, yeah, full of drug dealers too. And I wish I can just open my mouth a little bit, but I can't. But the mayor's all about crime and about safety, and let's put more businesses downtown, and we have all of these Johns and these Pips and these drug dealers downtown. But let's put some flame and make it more beautiful downtown. In upcoming weeks, I'm going to open up my mouth a little bit more about the downtown area, but it's not cracked up what it needs to be. So instead of worrying about fireplaces and bringing tourists here, let's get the drug dealers out of downtown from cooking meth and trying to sell it in the streets and marijuana imported into downtown areas. Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak on this item? All right, counselors, look for a motion, and then we can have a discussion on this. Move to set a date of hearing and second reading for Tuesday, the 13th, by Counsel Erickson?
Yep.
Seconded by Counsel Kylie. Discussion, Council. Counselor Starr?
I just quickly noticed, I think there's a typo in Section 117079. I think it says "my" instead of "by." It's in Section B, the one, two, three, fourth line down, about in the middle of the way.
We'll get it fixed.
Yeah, that's my suggestion before the, before the next reading, that you have an amendment.
Thank you, Counselor. Other discussion on this item? Counsel Breckie?
Just a few words, and I'd just like to give the audience and the council just a little background on this ordinance. It was written years and years ago, probably in the mid-'80s, this Peddlers' and Vending Ordinance. It was written to promote those bump-out spaces, to create an atmosphere downtown that was pleasant and to bring, you know, bring us outside, you know, on those months when we can be. And the whole, the whole concept for the, you know, underlying the vending and the Peddlers' ordinance, you know, was designed to just create that atmosphere, that experience that we wanted downtown. And so I just want, I think this, I was, I welcomed the opportunity to participate in drafting this ordinance because I see it as just another example of what we've been trying to do to downtown for years. It took years for this ordinance to actually take off, even after, even though it had been drafted over 20 years ago. I don't know when exactly the first restaurant actually, you know, took advantage of getting the permit and moving their restaurant out onto the bump-outs. But, you know, the reason, I think, for that, because a lot of things needed to happen, and they have happened. One of them was, we had a looping problem way back then, and there, you know, we really, the good businesses had not taken over Sioux Falls, so we had to seize downtown back. And that's happened more slowly than I would have ever imagined, having been, you know, having participated in the drafting of this ordinance years ago. But the other thing that had to happen, and we watched that happen, is this various layering has taken place. And now with the final piece of residential restaurants kicking off and the service sector coming in with the, you know, the drugstore and the Ace Hardware, we have a complete community and the total opportunity to create a neighborhood of downtown. And I see this as just another exciting element to it, and I'm particularly, you know, impressed with what I saw in Vale, Colorado. Again, with, you know, just, we're a cold winter country, you know, and that's why the ordinance, you know, doesn't just limit it to October, but this could be, these could be fired up during the Parade of Lights, something like that, or during those Christmas holiday in the evenings when they're going, doing extended hours. And again, just creating that experience downtown. The more that we take ownership of it, the more we do these kinds of things, I think the more we're going to achieve that original goal. And so that's, I see this as just a piece in the, a step in the right direction, a direction that the city's been trying to move downtown for years.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Kylie?
Thank you. The city has an investment in this area that we're debating here this evening, and so I'd like to see us maximize that investment as much as we can. So anything that we can do that's going to lengthen the use of these outdoor areas at the beginning of the outdoor season and again at the end, I'm in favor of. And we had all received a letter from, I believe it was Joe Bachelor, President of our Downtown Association, and one of the things that they did is they reached out to other communities to see what their experience was with fire pits similar to what we're considering here this evening. And they did not have one community give back to them about any safety issues or situations that could cause harm to their citizens. So I thought that was, that was a very interesting portion of that communication, so I'm in favor of this item.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion, Council? For now, let's take a vote on this item, please.
Councilmembers Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item thirty-six.
Item thirty-six is a first reading set a data hearing and second reading for Tuesday, November thirteenth, 2018 at 7:00 PM. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, approving the naming of a facility space on public property.
Hey, Sky.
Mayor, City Council, Sky Smothers, Recreation Manager, Parks and Recreation. Before we get to agenda items thirty-six and thirty-seven, we wanted to show the council what progress has occurred as it relates to sponsorship at the Midco Aquatic Center. Title naming rights were sold to Midco for 10 years at a value of $2.2 million. The recreation pool, sponsored by Children's Dental Parkway Orthodontics, for five years, $50,000. And with your approval of the naming application tonight for Papa John's and Sanford Health, the total private investment would account for $257,500 annually that would help offset the operational cost associated with the Midco Aquatic Center. Those packages left to be sponsored are the lounge, reception area, the outdoor features package, and the health and safety package. The Papa John's naming application before you was approved unanimously on October 23rd, 2018, by the Parks and Recreation Board. This application is to name the meeting rooms between the recreation and 50-meter pools, Papa John's Party Room 1, Papa John's Party Room 2, or Papa John's Party Rooms respectively, instead of Meeting Room 1 and Meeting Room 2. The term of the agreement is for five years with a $50,000 investment from Papa John's Iowa. Papa John's will be the exclusive provider of pizza for retail, delivery, and dine-in. We do have an exclusive agreement with Dive-In Concessions to operate out of the facility, and they are also in support of this application. As you can see from the photos, Papa John's logo would be placed on the doors associated with Rooms 1 and 2. And speaking with the franchise owner, their intent is to use a frosted logo, so the colors do not contrast with the other colors that are already located in the facility. And this is some other pictures from the inside of Meeting Rooms 1 and 2. I'd also like to mention that Mark Houter, Papa John's Iowa franchise owner, is in the audience to help answer any questions. I'd also like to mention this time that Ryan Query with Great Plains Sponsorship helped secure this package on behalf of the city, but he was unable to attend tonight due to a conflict.
With that, I'd... Thanks, Sky. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Counselors, do you have questions for Sky on this? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second, Erickson.
Moved to approve by Kylie, seconded by Counsel Erickson. Counselors, discussion? Counselor Staley?
Could we back this up to the slide that had all of the sponsors on it, please? Right there. Now, tell me, Sky, when did this all come into being? I mean, the sold, are these recent negotiations?
The Midco naming rights occurred, I would say, 2016, 2015. I'd go back and get those dates and get those to you.
Right, okay, yes.
The Children's Dental Parkway Orthodontics was done, I believe, after, after that, so probably around that 2016 timeframe, and the 50-meter and the recreation, or the meeting rooms that we're talking about tonight were just done here recently.
You know, back when this was, we voted on this, I can remember the push. I don't know that you were involved at the time. No, I don't.
No, no.
We didn't have any Sky there around. But there was this push that we were going to get these sponsors involved, and it was going to be in this economic engine, and it's happening. I'm leading to a compliment here, but this is what I think the public wanted to see happen, is that we're going to get this public partnership, public-private partnership kicked into gear, and so very, very, very happy to hear this. However, you're bringing up something in my mind that since Ten Hagans has been elected here, we really haven't had the update, is Don Kearney still sitting out there? We haven't really heard an update about the financial health and the usability of this Midco Center. I can remember vividly after it was implemented, we kept saying, when are we going to get a report? When will, oh, it was going to be April, and then it was a little later, we're going to get more people coming through the doors. So I know that's not on you, but I do think that it's beholden to us as the overseers of the financial health of our city that we hear that. So I would, I'm putting that in that I think, now that we have a new financial person coming on board, that we can get some numbers put together, but this, this sounds very promising, so thank you for your efforts.
Other questions, counselors? Okay, if not, I would entertain a motion on this to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, the 13th. We do, we have that on the table. Okay, then I'm going to ask for a vote on this.
Councilmembers Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero, and we have an additional item that I think may not be in your, it's in the counselors' agendas?
Yep.
Okay.
Item thirty-seven is a first reading, or it's a set a data hearing and second reading for Tuesday, November 13th, 2018 at 7:00 PM. First reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, approving the naming of a facility space on public property.
Hey, Sky. Mayor, City Council, Sky Smothers, Recreation Manager, Parks and Recreation. The Sanford Health naming application before you was also approved unanimously by the Parks and Recreation Board on October 23rd. The application is to name the 50-meter pool, the Sanford Health 50-meter pool, and the mezzanine, Sanford Health Mezzanine, instead of the 50-meter pool and the mezzanine. The term of the agreement is for 10 years with $175,000 investment from Sanford Health that would be paid in one lump sum. Sanford Health will have the exclusivity in healthcare, sports medicine, elder care, and weight management products and services. As you could see in the photo for the signage for the 50-meter pool, it is proposed to be on the north side of the pool, just left, just left of the video board. And as you can see in this photo, the signage is proposed to go on the block wall above the windows that overlook the recreation pool, and this is for the mezzanine signage. And this is just another picture of the mezzanine area showing the wall in which the mezzanine signage would be located. At this time, I'd like to mention that Colette Manning, Senior Executive Director for Marketing with Sanford Health, is in the audience to help answer any questions. And again, I'd like to mention that Ryan Query with Great Plains Sponsorship did help secure this sponsor, or this package on behalf of the city, and like I mentioned, unfortunately, was just unable to attend tonight.
Thank you, Sky. Is there anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Counselors, do you have questions for Sky on this sponsorship item? Is there a motion on this?
Move to set the second reading to Tuesday, November 13th.
And second.
Okay, move to set the date of hearing and second reading for the 13th, by Erickson, seconded by Kylie. Any discussion? Counsel Kylie?
I just very briefly would like to thank Papa John's and Sanford for their support to our aquatic facility. It's greatly appreciated.
Any other discussion, Council? If not, I'd ask for a vote, please.
Councilmembers Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item thirty-eight is a resolution approving the release of permanent easements located in the northwest 1/4 of Section 6 T101 North, R49 West of the 5th PM, and in Lot 1, Block 5 of Sanford Sports Complex, south addition to the city of Sioux Falls, all in Minnehaha County, South Dakota.
Hey, Kurt.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Kurt Pepfel, Public Works Engineering. The easements in question to be released are in the south of the Benson Road and Westport Avenue intersection near Sanford Sports Complex. Easements were created by Platt in the early 2000s. JSA engineers and surveyors on behalf of the owners have requested that the permanent easement areas be released. No facilities are located within the permanent easement areas to be released. The city of Sioux Falls engineering staff have reviewed and recommend that the easements be released.
Thanks, Kurt. Is there one here from the public to speak on this item? Counselors, do you have questions for Kurt on this item? Is there a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Move to approve by Kylie, seconded by Sale. Any further discussion? A vote on this, please.
Councilmembers Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item thirty-nine is a resolution to approve a historic marker on city property.
Jason Bieber, again, representing Planning and Development Services. This is an application by Jim Carlson with the Minnehaha County Historical Society. We're looking at, or they're looking, excuse me, at placing a historical marker in Van Emps Park on the northwest corner of the park, just west of the People's Choice Sculpture. It will be a historical marker to recognize the first Jewish house of worship in South Dakota, which was established in 1916. It has been approved by the Park Board in September of 2018, and then also went to the Historical Board of Preservation last month, so.
Thank you, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, City Council. My name is Jim Carlson, and I'm the current Historical Marker Chairman for Minnehaha County Historical Society. A little bit of history, I took over from Bruce Blake. Maybe some of you knew him. He was a retired attorney who died a couple of years ago, but he is responsible for almost 250, 250 historical markers in Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County. Since I've been involved, I've gotten
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item thirty-nine is a resolution approving the release of permanent easements located in the northwest one-fourth of Section 60101, North R49 West of the Fifth PM, and in Lot One, Block Five of Sanford Sports Complex, south addition to the City of Sioux Falls, all in Minnehaha County, South Dakota.
Hey, Kurt.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Kurt Pepel, Public Works Engineering. The easements in question to be released are in the south of the Benson Road and Westport Avenue intersection near Sanford Sports Complex. Easements were created by Platt in the early 2000s. JSA engineers and surveyors on behalf of the owners have requested that the permanent easement areas be released. No facilities are located within the permanent easement areas to be released. City of Sioux Falls engineering staff have reviewed and recommend that the easements be released.
Thanks, Kurt. Is there anyone here from the public to speak on this item? Counselors, do you have questions for Kurt on this item? Is there a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Move to approve by Kylie, seconded by Sale. Any further discussion? A vote on this, please.
Councilmembers Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. And we have an additional item that I think may not be in your, it's in the Counselors' agendas?
Yep. Item thirty-seven is a first reading, or it's a set a date, a hearing and second reading for Tuesday, November thirteenth, 2018 at 7:00 PM. First reading, an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota approving the naming of a facility spaced on public property.
Hey, Sky.
Mayor, City Council, Sky Smothers, Recreation Manager, Parks and Recreation. The Sanford Health naming application before you was also approved unanimously by the Parks and Recreation Board on October 23rd. The application is to name the 50-meter pool, the Sanford Health 50-meter pool, and the mezzanine, Sanford Health Mezzanine, instead of the 50-meter pool and the mezzanine. The term of the agreement is for 10 years with $175,000 investment from Sanford Health that would be paid in one lump sum. Sanford Health will have the exclusivity in healthcare, sports medicine, elder care, and weight management products and services. As you could see in the photo for the signage for the 50-meter pool, it is proposed to be on the north side of the pool, just left, just left of the video board. And as you can see in this photo, the signage is proposed to go on the block wall above the windows that overlook the recreation pool, and this is for the mezzanine signage. And this is just another picture of the mezzanine area showing the wall in which the mezzanine signage would be located. And at this time, I'd like to mention that Colette Manning, Senior Executive Director for Marketing with Sanford Health, is in the audience to help answer any questions. And again, I'd like to mention that Ryan Query with Great Plains Sponsorship did help secure this sponsor, or this package on behalf of the city, and like I mentioned, unfortunately, he was just unable to attend tonight.
Thank you, Sky. Is there anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, City Council. My name is Jim Carlson, and I'm the current Historical Marker Chairman for Minnehaha County Historical Society. A little bit of history, I took over from Bruce Blake. Maybe some of you knew him. He was a retired attorney who died a couple of years ago, but he is responsible for almost 250, 100, 250, 100 historical markers in Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County. Since I've been involved, I've gotten about five I've done. Did two at Veterans Park, and working on this one for the First Jewish Synagogue in South Dakota. The one I'm working with, his name is Jerry Klinger, and he's President of the American Jewish Historical Society. They're the ones that funded it and paid for this marker. And, and I had one of the local Jewish people kind of came up with the text, and they put it all together. And of course, the church was an Episcopal church, and then the Jew, the Jewish church bought it, and then they sold it to St. John's Baptist Church, which was a black church, which I have the picture here. This marker would go at Van Epps Park. Right now, the building was at 320 North Minnesota, which is now a city, a county parking lot, so the building is no more. But they, they sold it in '26 to the black church. And there is a marker at Van Epps Park, it's for the, in January 12th, 1961, Martin Luther King visited Sioux Falls and spoke at the St. John Baptist Church, and then he also stayed in the parsonage. So there's a marker already there. When they did, if you look at this, it says 2016, and that's when I started on this. And of course, the, one of the stalls, he came in because he changed the character of the park, and it took a while to get that together. So that's kind of where we are now. And so I don't know if, any questions? That's kind of the history of historical markers in Sioux Falls, and we'll put out more if anybody has interest in them.
Jim, thank you. Thanks for your, your dedication to this work. We appreciate it very much. Anyone else here to speak on this item? Counselors, do you have any questions for Jim or for Jason on this? Counselor Staley.
Welcome, Jim. I knew Bruce Blake very well, used to walk by my home, and he gave me a bunch of commemorative little folders, which I think are priceless. What is one of these signs costing?
The price, I haven't done one for a year or so now, and the price has gone up there, but the big ones are about $3,500. Smaller ones are about $3,000.
So this one...
And they're made out of cast iron aluminum. I get them from Seawell Studios in Marietta, Ohio.
So where does the funding come from that?
If you go out and, we've got the great park system here, and if you go to Falls Park, there's nine markers there, so you probably wouldn't want to do it now, but in the spring, when there's nicer weather, I challenge you to go kind of look at them. And they'll all say how they're funded by different, different events, but this one, the Jewish church, the American Jewish Historical Society paid for it.
Oh, okay. And, and who will be putting, is the city going to put it up then?
No, we put it up. We install it and actually maintain it. Once here, we go around and basically I might have to paint the post.
So do you care for the one that's on the south side of City Hall as well?
Right.
Yeah, which everybody should read that one. It's a fabulous marker, about the statehood, the history of statehood. So anyway, thank you for what you're doing. And are you going to have a ceremony?
I guess, but Jerry Klinger from New York says he'd like to be here, so I don't know if we'll get it up now. I don't know how long it takes after you approve, but probably in the spring.
Okay.
I'd like to have a dedication, dedicate Van Epps Park, but I'm not sure how that's going either.
Thank you, Jim. Counselor Selberg, did you have a question? Yeah, Jim, I was just going to echo that. Thank you for your efforts. How many years have you been involved in this now, like the Historical Committee and this effort?
I've been in the Historical Society about 22 years.
I was going to say.
I'm a past president, past vice president, and now I'm current Historical Marker Chairman.
All right, you do a great job.
Thank you.
All right. Counselors, is there a motion on this item?
Move to approve.
Second, Selberg.
All right, move to approve by Brecky and seconded by Selberg. Any further discussion? Vote on this, please.
Councilmembers Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item forty is a resolution approving the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Sioux Falls and the Sioux Falls Firefighters Association.
Good evening, Bill.
Mayor, City Council, Bill O'Toole, Human Resources Director. It's my privilege to present this item tonight, but I do want to point out that with me are several members of the city's bargaining team, as well as several members of the Sioux Falls Firefighters Bargaining Team. If you have any specific questions, I know any of those folks would be happy to answer them. Real quickly, letting you know that we have come to an agreement on all wages, hours, and conditions of employment with the Firefighters Union, covering the next two years, 2019 and 2020. We started negotiations in May, and we wrapped up, we really wrapped up in about August 2nd after about five meetings, and we concluded with one follow-up meeting. These have been some of the most professional, productive, and efficient bargaining meetings that we've had in a very long time. I give a lot of credit to the leadership of Sioux Falls Fire Rescue and to the leadership of the Sioux Falls Firefighters Association for that process as well. We have attached with this document a fairly descriptive piece and document for members of the public and for yourself that talks about the economic and non-economic issues. But for purposes of this item, I'm just going to talk to the high-level items, which usually involve the economic pieces that are tied to it. And very specifically, for 2019, the cost of living adjustment in this labor contract is 2.5%, and in 2020, it is 3%. Another significant issue as it relates to this contract was coming to some terms on ALS services, to be prepared to do that in the City of Sioux Falls if that decision moves forward. And we have those provisions in place for both 2019 and 2020. So those structures are in place. Again, I'm not going to get into all the details. There's a lot of operational issues that probably wouldn't mean a lot to many folks as it relates to this, but if there are questions, we'd like to respond to you in that fashion. So with that, we'd be happy to take any questions and urge your support for this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Counselors, do you have questions for Bill on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Counselor, sir.
Yes, Director O'Toole, I guess one of my questions are this, one of the economic things that you pointed out was the dollar increase for premium pay for those that perform advanced life support. Do we do that with other groups of employees where they take specific tasks and specific items and pay them in addition to? Would this be for the entire shift, or this is a, an overall dollar per hour or more for the paramedics that do provide ALS services? Or is it just in specific times when they perform those duties?
I would, I would tell you that for, for each of the three shifts that the Sioux